We're surviving this. Don't you just love Kansas weather now? Twenty below eighty?
You know, this has been the most interesting winter I've ever seen.
It's the coldest one, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've been having mild ones, haven't we?
Well, you know, I used to call back to my family out east and say, "Ha ha, it's seventy degrees in January." But not this year.
They've been getting some bad weather too, ain't they?
We, it's...
They don't get a lot of snow.
In Pennsylvania, it's always wet and snowy, all winter long, and you don't get a break from it. But it's not, like, the wind chill factor is not near what you get here.
No, we got really, we really got wind there. Yeah, our wind can be brutal.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna call the meeting to order without Dawn, and if you'd like to join me for the pledge allegiance, there's a flag there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will start with correspondence. Okay, we had had some ads out for board appointments for different boards. This is the ad, what we approved to send out. So I have, actually, what I received here is a resignation from Leo Vannetta from the preservation board. So that, we need to address. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. And then I have a letter of interest for the, I think you say it, Delia Pittard Fund, and that, the letter of interest is Terry Jo Heater. Oh, and I forgot to mention, we have an amendment to the agenda. Levana was scheduled from eleven to eleven forty-five today, and we are not going to do that because we believe we may be down to a two-person commission for today. We have a letter for request for continuation for another term on the hospital board from Mr. Houston. We have a letter for request for reappointment to the hospital board from Mr. Liggett. Are any of these more correspondence or they all, I guess I'll do the bills to you?
Yes, you can just read the cost to do this, and this is what it'd look like. She says, "Mind you," she thinks it'll still be illegible.
You didn't happen to resend it in a PDF? I don't...
I did that this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do this.
I told her, I said, she, 'cause she felt like, she, she said, otherwise it could be, at first she was saying three hundred, but she said, "If I could get it in a PDF, then I could see where it actually lays out and what it looks like."
Okay.
So I was able to open it in Word and save it that way.
Thank you. So we have correspondence from the Lincoln Sentinel Republican, the public update that we put together on the nursing home that we reviewed and corrected last week. That's the format, and it was estimated to be a hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a print in the paper.
One question, well, that, that, I noticed the other day, I kind of, maybe it was only on my phone when I had it opened up, but it was kind of, it wrote over some of the other writing here, but that was on my phone.
I think that's because of the formatting.
The format of the phone.
They asked me to change it. I had saved it as a doc, docs, and I, that's just because I saved it in Word.
But when printed, that won't be, hopefully.
No, she, she resented this morning in a PDF file, and I'm...
Very good, that's fine.
Computer illiterate, so thank you, Dawn.
No, well, that's fine, thank you. I saw that on my phone, that you guys sent it out, and some of those words were...
Yes, the formatting was...
Yeah, they were wiped over by that, that one, middle statement, okay.
Okay, we have received a bill from Street Plumbing for checking the furnace at Lincoln Park Manor. The Arjo Company again for battery packs and casters for something, would that be for a bed?
It must be for the lift beds. I think that's what that is.
Eight hundred twenty-seven thirty-five from Arjo. North Central Regional Planning Commission, a few weeks ago, we were asked to sign a resolution for North Central Regional Planning Commission, and I had noticed that we didn't receive the corresponding documents that we were supposed to have, that we were agreeing to. So we need to go over that, but that's a little lengthy, but we received that today. And a bill for Lincoln General, Lincoln County General. Drain?
I think it's actually for the nursing home.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, LPM, there it says. Drain opener, I'm assuming that's a liquid declogging agent. Another bill for a battery, an alkaline battery, a hundred and seventeen forty-eight from Lincoln Building Supply. Another entry lock for twenty dollars ninety-nine cents from Lincoln Building Supply. Those are the bills for Lincoln Park Manor. Excuse me.
You know, speaking Lincoln Park Manor, I don't know if this is the right time to do it, but I just called like Thursday because I don't know who the, some inspector said, it was leaking water, leaking gas in the roof, and so I just seen the inside of the facility, like an environmental engineer, and I didn't know what, I was out of town, and I said, "Well, I can't be there." Anyway, but this brings up to me, and maybe you know, Alexis, since Greg, that cock left, he would go up and clean the roof off, and Terry did too, and he was there. Now that they're gone, is it, is it the county's responsibility as a maintenance person for the facility to do stuff like that, go on the roof and do that? Or is it, does that fall under Grace's personnel as a maintenance person to do something like that? Because this thing's leaking, and I didn't clean that stove off, but who's supposed to do this? And I don't know now if we have anybody in there to do this. And do you know?
Well, I do know that in the lease, it specifically says that we, they, that the company who was renting will have a maintenance person, a full-time maintenance person, and they will notify us when that changes. So they did notify us that he was leaving, but that would be their responsibility. However, we don't want to let that go.
No, well, it's the building, and I was almost wondering, this could go on, we could talk, I'd all hurry up here. But since we own the facility, it'd almost seem like, why didn't Lincoln County have actually a maintenance person to really handle the facility, like, the hardware of the facility? Because it's our building, and I know, maybe, this happened years ago, I'm sure, where they got the maintenance person part of the operating contract. But really, it's our building, and we don't want it to be damaged or something.
But we don't want it neglected, right?
Yeah, if they neglect it, so I just, I brought that up.
Yes, I understand, and you go.
Anyway, I'll go on, so that'll be the latest here.
That's okay, that's okay. I would, I would say that we could approve the bills except for the drain opener, which I believe should be on responsibility. I believe consumable products that are used and discarded of should be their responsibility.
Let me make a motion on that now?
We usually don't, we usually approve them, and then, or have a consensus that...
We can wait for Algo, if it's no hurry.
Well, I can approve, I can sign them, and I, I will sign them except for the drain opener, if that pleases you. Okay.
Fine with me.
Okay. I will take your...
I didn't know if you wanted that.
That's all we have to do, is just give a signature on them for their accounts payable. And then I have two tax abatements. Let me read the numbers. Twenty eighteen dash fourteen and twenty eighteen dash fifteen. It is a sold truck, Chevy, from Roger Solter, in the correction amount of, does it say eight dollars? Is that what you saw, Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one's eight and one's two.
Okay, so a refund of eight dollars, and then a Ford pickup sold in May of eighteen, and the correction is fourteen dollars. So I move to approve tax abatements, two thousand eighteen dash fourteen and fifteen.
No struggle.
There's no further discussion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Yeah, I'm done with this. And I have another correspondence here. Some questions that I received in writing about the senior programs mill levy. It's a question, isn't it a conflict of interest for Glenn Stigman to ask for money when his daughter works for the Lincoln Senior Center or the Council on Aging? And does the mill levy for senior programs cover employment? That's meaning, I think what this question means is, we're collecting that mill levy every year, is it supposed to be used to employ someone? And then, who are the officers for the Lincoln Senior Center, and when do they meet? I can't answer that question, but maybe we could cover that later, because I know we have some people on the agenda for that topic. I believe I have gone over all the correspondence that we've received. There's a workshop put on by Kansas Department of Commerce for Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty nineteen, in Salina. If you're interested in looking at that. And we received bylaws and the last meeting minutes from January for the Council on Aging.
Can I look at this and take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. And did you want to look at the minutes with me from last week? February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, we approved the minutes. We had Mr. Schneider in here with his attorney, Mr. Krangle, talked about reviewing the agreement. We stated that the county councilor should look at it, and I think Mr. Krangle was going to correspond with her. The county clerk provided an email regarding the Smokey Hills Wind Farm repowering process. We also talked about employees utilizing county vehicles and when their work time starts, if they're clocking in from home or once they arrive at work, and vice versa at the end of the day. Highway department talked about, we did not get the high-risk rural roads grant that we had applied for last year. We talked about other counties who contract their mowing and the expense. We approved the warranty for twenty-four months on the twelve M motor grader that we have, the oldest one. And we also talked about Mr. Schneider's proposal with the highway department. We had the county clerk to the table again and discuss time cards and comp time for different departments, and what the hours are, and our need to have a resolution on that, which we need to get to relatively soon, and the handbook, what the handbook says. I have requested to be on the agenda for the city of Lincoln on behalf of the commission to discuss the nursing home contract that exists between John Grace and the city. I shouldn't say nursing home, the building contract, the land contract. And that was approved, so I will be going there.
What is that? Do you know what day that is or whatever?
It's next Monday, I believe, right, Dawn? Is it, 'cause she told me I would get a phone call on the seventh, so that would be Saturday. No, I'm on the wrong month.
It's the second meeting, sorry.
Is that open, I saw it say open to the public?
Yes, that's a public meeting, you can attend, anyone can attend.
I want to make, 'cause I just wanted to visit them anyway, just as a, tell me you just come and listen. That's Monday?
That would be the eleventh, today's the fourth.
What time is it?
It's six PM or seven PM.
It doesn't matter.
Seven, I think, I think it's seven PM, and she told me that I would get my time assignment on the agenda this Thursday, which would be the seventh. So I can let you know on Monday morning.
Yeah, yeah, I just like to sit, listen, and so, visit.
Yep. So I do not see any corrections for the minutes.
I do not either, I take the, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
From February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, second. If there is no further discussion, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Not opposed. And February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, was our end-of-the-month meeting. We approved payroll in the amount of two hundred thousand one hundred and ninety dollars seventy-six cents, accounts payable four hundred and forty thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cents. I had stated that I would forward the public statement regarding the nursing home to both newspapers, which I did. And then I asked for things to be put on the agenda for today, which would be the ambulance director interview panel, and to set a tentative date for the last week in March to do those interviews for that position, and to also review the human resource officer job description so that we can continue the hiring process there. And then we adjourned the meeting at ten forty. So we were there from ten to ten forty on February twenty-eighth. I move to approve minutes from February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Has the motion been seconded? If there's no further discussion, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries to approve both sets of minutes. And it is ten fifteen, and we have Judy Oliver's from the Council on Aging. If you would like to come up to the table, please.
Okay, here's her, her file that we've done. And I just paid a bill that comes, find out, was supposed to be from the county for eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents for the Senior Care Act. There's copies there.
In this packet you gave?
Yes. No.
Oh, what you just handed. I got it, thank you.
Anyway, you seem to keep asking, so here's the front page of the Kansas, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I ran out of paper. And the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency. Kind of what they do. We've cut down the budget.
Okay, so let's address the first thing you said. You paid a bill to North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging for eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents, and this is for the portion that they have categorized under Senior Care Act funding. And I have a question for Dawn, since Dawn knows. Was this the portion that was assigned to the Health Department, Senior Care Act?
So, yes, and we pay for it. This would be the balance of what they asked for supposedly and what we actually paid.
So we had approved a specific amount out of the Health, out of the Health Department budget, which was already paid to this organization. And so they sent you a bill for the remainder of what they requested that we did not approve to pay.
Correct, and they...
Well, they say they haven't received any, this amount of money for several years.
Well, here's, here's how this works. Any organization can request money from the commission, okay? So we have NCFH AAA, which is North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, requesting money from our county. And I think the total amounts to twenty-eight hundred dollars, somewhere in there. And so then, out of the county budget, we approved a specific amount to come out of the Health Department for the Senior Care Act. The Council on Aging was paying their portion for the Older Americans Act, I think is what it's called. I think that's the other, because there's federal funding and there's...
Fifteen hundred dollars, and that's for the North Central Flint Hills Area Agent. There's two different things.
Yes, yes, and I think what they did was they billed the Council on Aging for the remaining...
For the balance.
...that we refused to pay, but I don't think that that is fair, and I don't think that is right. They were requesting funds and...
And we only gave them, right, they can request as much money as they want, but we approved a specific amount and paid it. So you already sent this check?
Yes.
When?
I think last week.
Last Tuesday.
Okay, I'm going to call and tell them that we had approved a specific amount which came out of our Health Department budget.
So in this, okay, back up a little bit. For our budget, we are seeing just the North Central Flint Hills AAA, not including that Senior Care Act. If we're gonna have to pay this, then somewhere we've got to figure out some more money.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna try to explain this again. When they request money, we do not have to give it. It's by our own agreement that the consensus of this board, or your board, or whomever, is paying the bill. It's by our consensus to agree to pay any specific amount of money. So if you are agreeing as a board to budget fifteen hundred dollars for that organization, then you can send them a check for fifteen hundred dollars. Because, just because they send you a bill because they want more, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to supply that. I think, I watched some of the meeting, and the question was, what happens to the relationship between North Central Flint Hills AAA and Lincoln County Council on Aging? If you don't pay them, and nothing hap, nothing happens there. You're choosing to fund them for their overhead costs, for their organization to exist. The relationship that is between the Senior Center of Lincoln and the North Central Flint Hills AAA, that is for the meals program that they call Friendship Meals. Does that make sense to you?
They, yeah, they pay their own part of it, this is for the...
Well, no, they don't pay to belong to them, they have to...
They receive money from them.
To run the old program. Right, so it's by your own board's choice.
If we pay this extra or not.
However much you pay, whether you pay ten dollars or whether you pay a thousand dollars, that's the choice of the board. So I have a question before I call North Central Flint Hills. Did your board see this bill for eight hundred ninety-seven twenty-two and approve the payment? Or did you just receive the bill and send the check?
No, she brought this at the meeting.
I, I skimmed through, I skimmed through the meeting, so I didn't...
They thought that they had to pay it.
Right. Well, she's saying she brought it in person, I didn't realize that.
Rose Landis comes, as a rule, every month to the meeting. She's a representative from...
I know who she is, yes, thank you.
Okay, so she handed us these two bills.
Two bills?
Well, the other one was...
The administrative.
Yeah.
But that's what you normally pay.
Yes.
So that was for the new year, two thousand nineteen, but this was two thousand...
This is from, it says on there, it was due January eighteenth.
Of eighteen.
Is that part of that fee there?
And...
Yes, but she's saying this is in addition to what they budgeted, because this is a portion of what they requested from us, that our Health Department already paid, but we only approved, I'm, I don't know the amount, but whatever we approved was less that.
Okay.
So then they came to a different organization to get their balance paid.
And she kept saying how this was supposed to be paid by January twenty-nineteenth. And then in April, we'll give another bill that has to be paid by January, into January twenty-twenty, so...
Okay, I will call them, and then I will come to your board meeting. Is it the nineteenth, or is it the twenty-sixth, Tuesday?
I can't quite see, twenty-sixth, four weeks.
The twenty-sixth is the last Tuesday.
Fourth, fourth one, okay.
Yes. I'm gonna send you a message, 'cause I can't look, but I'm pretty sure we paid that in January.
The two thousand nineteen portion of the Health Department allocation.
Why, anyway, this is our, the budget, as much as we've cut it down to this page, compared to what I gave you two weeks ago.
Okay, so now you have a total request for thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. And could you just give us an overview of where you've cut? I see your homemaking services is cut in half, you had five thousand originally.
The bus.
I think, if I'm right.
Yes, we cut the postage, we didn't fill.
Do you really have fifteen hundred dollars in newspaper ads, or is that some other type of? See at the bottom, fourth from the bottom, that's a lot of newspaper ads. Right? I just curious.
I'm thinking...
I'm just wondering.
I'm wondering, I should have brought the one I scribbled all over, maybe I did.
That's okay, and that's, and then also professional fees, do you have an attorney that you consult for that, or what?
Okay, this is paying for Jean Krangle.
Oh, that's for doing the books?
Yes.
For doing your, she's your accountant to do the...
Yes.
Okay, that's professional.
I do have a question about that, though. Why doesn't the treasurer do the books? If you have a board with a treasurer, doesn't the treasurer perform that?
Okay, we're trying to clean up the mess that we had, and it was the end of the year, and we didn't know where to begin to start, so, and she's starting...
I can understand how Jean do it now, 'cause it was probably a mess, so, but that's for, that's the books for...
We may drop her later, but she's still helping us much through everything.
I understand what that's for.
So you're expecting to rely on her services still? I guess I'm just saying, I know in the past, the treasurer never did the books for that organization.
No, because Teresa done it.
Right, and that's a problem. I mean, when you have an organization and you volunteer to be on the board, and you have a hierarchy of a board with a president, and a vice president, and a secretary and a treasurer, the treasurer does the books, you don't pay someone to do the books for your organization.
Well, sometimes I'm taxed, you know, because, because during nine-four-ones and then quarterly reports and year-end stuff.
She done all of that.
That can be a little in-depth, 'cause I do now at the Art Center now, actually.
But do you get paid for it?
I'm a treasurer, I do get...
But do you get paid for it?
Seventy-five bucks a month, I mean, but as a treasurer, but I'm paying the bill and stuff, yeah.
So you'll do it for them for happy, Matt, right?
No, I don't do that, we have, we have, we have Mr. Krangle do ours, do the tax stuff. The reason I do it too, and the tax stuff is, that one's like a third party.
She's the filer, she's the filer, the preparer.
Well, it's a third party out of that, involved with the thing that way, that, you know, it makes it like independent from us, of the organization, so, but I can see why you did that.
And last time he says, "Why the telephone?" Okay, we need the internet, because right now, Ego is using the Senior Center for promotional reason, and at any time, they could pull it, and then...
You mean they're giving it to them for free?
Yes, so, for the council, we have a phone and the internet.
Yeah.
And we aren't real sure, we still haven't gotten an actual monthly bill without signing up, and so we're guessing at this amount.
Well, that's understandable, that's like hundred and twenty a month, and that's for phone, and that's reasonable, probably.
So my only question is about the budget, going back to what we had talked about last time. And, and as I said, I skimmed through the video, so I didn't watch from beginning to end the whole thing, but did you, it's my assumption that you didn't, but did you talk about the ability of the Senior Center itself to employ this person that you're employing so that you don't have the double overhead and that that dollar amount could be worked into the Senior Center budget?
Okay, it has, Becky is being hired by the Senior Center in the morning. We are paying for her to deal with all this in the afternoon.
Right, I know that, and I'm saying...
Well, I don't understand then what your question is.
I guess my question is, looking at it as, as a representative of my taxpayers who are paying into this, if she's going to be hired for a full day, regardless of what she's doing in the morning or in the afternoon, even if it's not a full day, just the fact that you have an employee, why can the Senior Center not hire her for both jobs and just budget this dollar amount that's going to be paid out into their own budget? Why does she have to have two separate employers to be in the same building and utilize the same electric and the same gas and the same, potentially the same telephone line? I mean, I understand what you're saying, you have one for free right now, that may not be free later, but...
Okay, and they've got their own phone. I don't know exactly who pays the Senior Center, but people call in for meals there. If they want some help, they call the Senior Center number, okay? And what I understood from the Manhattan, that we had to have this divided. She couldn't be doing all one thing at one time.
Well, it's our own county money, so they can't really tell us what to do with it, I will say that. I mean, if, if we're going to pay her out of county money, then another third-party organization has no control over that. then another third-party organization has no control over that.
Because she cannot deal, to work for us and the Senior Center, she cannot deal with any money, okay? Where she collects money for the meals.
Well, I brought that up before, why we almost could consolidate. But I think they have their own special direction, because, uh, you guys deal more with the county, the rest of the county, where the Senior Center's mostly the city of Lincoln, and the Council on Aging's more or less people in the country too, right? So that differentiates, that differentiates them. But I kinda wonder too, Alexis, it seems like we have four, we have three thousand people in this county, and we have four entities helping the seniors. And I'm, you have the Flint Hills Council on Aging, Lincoln Council on Aging, Lincoln Senior Center, Sylvan Senior Center. Four entities, and for three thousand people, and how many are elderly? One thousand, so... And I'm not against any of that, but I just don't know, do we need all them? Can we consolidate them? Just to make things work more efficiently, and maybe save a little money too.
Okay, do you wanna do away with the Council on Aging?
No, not necessarily. I just don't understand why we have to...
My opinion, have you ever read, have you ever read the Articles of Incorporation for the Council on Aging? Have you read them? The Articles of Incorporation for the Council on Aging basically state that this group is a lobbying group. So if you meet monthly and brainstorm as volunteers that run a board, you don't necessarily have to have financial transactions where you hire an employee. Um, there's a difference there. If you're facilitating programs, where, I'll just use the example of the Lincoln Senior Center facilitating the meal program, they're hiring people to, to perform that function. Um, the Council on Aging, in the past, the only justification that they've had for facilitating a function was schick. And that is actually a volunteer opportunity that anyone can participate in.
Then why didn't you question Teresa? She got paid to do this.
I questioned Teresa, and she accused me of stalking her, because I had this very same question. And I was taken to court over this. So I did have this question multiple times, and years ago. So, my, what I'm saying to you is, if, if there's still a need to hire someone to answer the phone, and to potentially make a trip to someone's house, I'm, my whole standpoint is, why can't the Senior Center facilitate that? It already exists. It had its, it has its own building. It has, you know, you're not paying rent. It has its own bank fees for its own bank account. It has its own postage, um, line item in its, in its budget.
Okay, we're paying rent to help them with the utilities for the room we've got, and to keep heating there. And a hundred dollars a month, we don't feel, it's not landish.
The county is already paying for that, though. We're already paying for the Senior Center's budget for them to exist. Then we're paying this other group to pay them rent to be in that building, out of the same mill levy fund. So that's my concern.
You know, compared to when Teresa was here, we have cut the budget greatly. And here, we never once, none of us, heard any questions about the budget at all, when our meetings came up, never. I've been on here for three years. I was on the board for a year and a half before, and never has this been brought up. We cut the budget as much as we can.
Well, I appreciate it. Um, I'm, my question is, why can't the Senior Center facilitate?
They would have to be here to help answer. They aren't.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't talk for them.
Yeah, we know. You've got, your budget's good, and you've done well. We're not really attacking you here, I don't think. We're not at the issue. I think the issue is, is, it seems like, what does the Senior Center provide that you guys do differently? And I know, obviously, they have food and services.
I don't think it's what do they provide. I think it's what can't they? What, what can they not do that has been armed?
What do you guys provide that the Senior Center doesn't do? Can you tell us that? And I'm not against you guys. I'm not, I'm just asking questions here, and you may be, or justified. I'm just curious on this. I'm new.
We had someone just wanting to sign up. We had the information to give him for Medicare, how to contact Social Security.
Okay.
Um, what else did they do?
But Becky's going to do that, correct?
Uh, yeah, I know. Well, see, Becky's gonna do both, she's gonna handle you guys. So she's really gonna be both, in charge of both of it. You have two operations and, and, uh...
Uh, okay, I, we'll, we'll let go of, of the, the what ifs, or what could be. What I wanna know is, what is your plan for your savings account? You guys reported forty-seven thousand to us last time. What is your plan for the forty-seven thousand? And I'm asking that legitimately, because it was already given to you by the commission. So if you have that in your bank account, you're asking for another thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-five for your overhead for two thousand nineteen. What is the plan for the forty-seven thousand?
This is going on whenever you come up with your budget.
No, I'm asking, what is the plan for the forty-seven thousand in the bank? If your budget for two thousand nineteen is thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-five, what's the plan, what is the LCCA planning to do with the forty-seven thousand that's in the savings account and CDs? Checking account and CDs.
Do you have any plan for it now? Maybe you don't, but...
This wasn't discussed. We had, last meeting was extremely full, trying to get...
Okay, so, so in other words, you really don't have any plan for it right now, and that's still just out there, right?
We're trying, you know, every time we come up with an idea, we've been shot down by somebody. So, I don't know.
So, that's...
We need to bring this back. Okay?
Well, no.
I will talk to the North Central Flint Hills AAA about the bill that they sent you. And I think maybe the next thing that the Council on Aging should do is read their own Articles of Incorporation, and talk about what that...
I'll try and find it.
Yeah, you can find it on, I found it online. It's, it's, it's a public document, because you...
For the Lincoln?
For the LCCA.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Judy. Okay. On the agenda, I have county attorney, Ms. Jennifer O'Hare. How are you?
Good.
Are we only dealing with the potential road agreement, or did you have something else?
The potential road agreement, and I think we need to go into executive session.
Over the agree, of the road agreement?
Yes.
For county, uh, for attorney-client privilege?
Yes.
Okay, so would...
To preserve that.
Would ten minutes be okay?
I think that's fine.
I have you on the agenda only for fifteen. I'm sorry, we're five to five, but...
I think we can do it in ten, if you're all right.
Um, I move to enter into executive session for ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing potential road agreement with Mr. Schneider and Mr. Krangle, pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen, two B, number two, for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, to reconvene in the courthouse basement meeting room.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the executive session. Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Can you do that?
I'll be back in a second.
We are waiting on the revisions that the county attorney did to the agreement, and then she's gonna bring them back. She's just doing that right now. Um, in the meantime, we do have someone else on the agenda. So, my question for you, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Decker, would you like to go into executive session? Because, uh, technically, if you would like to reveal any personal medical information regarding your question about the ambulance situation, you may have an executive session. If you just want to discuss anything financial, and not discuss anything related to the medical situation, and you, you know, private medical information, then we can do that in open session. Probably executive session, okay. Okay, we have Mr. and Mrs. Decker on the agenda, and they would like to do it in executive session, since it's, um, dealing with medical information.
Yeah, I know.
So...
Okay.
I think we can go ahead and do that. We'll probably be waiting on Jennifer for a few minutes.
We'll do executive session with her.
Do you believe ten minutes would be a surprise? I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing an ambulance billing situation, and the health and medical details of the, what do we wanna call it? Recipient of services pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, number ten, I believe, to discuss matters relating to patients and providers. Permitted to be discussed in closer executive session with the commission and Mr. and Mrs. Decker.
Uh, I don't know Mr. Decker's name, sorry.
Ramo, R-A-M-O.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yes, please, yeah, come to the table. Yeah. So... I think she needs that too, I'm pretty sure.
That's what she was saying to pay for something we can talk about, since she's eighteen, I don't know.
Oh, okay, because it was her information.
But if you want to get the money from her, it'd be like...
But it's your bill, it was...
She's a college kid.
Bill to you. Yes. Okay, so, the first one is on top, and the second one's on the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
First one on the top, and the second one's on the bottom.
Okay.
Okay. I move to remove the charge, the second charge for five hundred dollars on account number D-E-C-K-E-R twenty-four zero nine, claim number forty-six.
You got it?
Remain, I'm sorry, um, leaving the remainder billing of mileage plus one transport fee.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, maybe we should discuss to the public. We've had a, the, the Decker family here had, uh, daughter was ill, and had an emergency from Sylvan, thinking going to Salina, but stopped it later. And then re-entered, stabilized their daughter, re-entered and went on to Salina, and we're wanting to claim that. And I seconded it, and Alexis made the motion to, uh, count this as one billing instead of two. So I second that, and that's what this is about.
Comment?
I'm not disagreeing with, with your decision here by any means. Um, I just don't wanna set a precedence, because this is something that happens on a regular basis, because insurance says you will transport to the closest facility. So that's how we get paid by insurance, if we go above and beyond the closest facility.
And I will, I understand...
I'm completely fine with what you're doing. I just don't wanna set a precedence.
And we did talk about that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And, and that's fine, I understand that. Uh, when the, I was on understanding, I was there when they called the ambulance originally, that we were gonna go to Salina, because there was a wreck on the interstate. It was a bad storm that day.
And the weather was bad, getting south of the facility.
Right, so, so Salina's not the closest facility.
Right.
But that's where we were going originally. You said we're required to stop at the closest? I...
We're required to stop at the closest appropriate facility. Now, appropriate is up for debate.
So originally, we were saying Salina was the closest appropriate, and then we changed it.
We, as an ambulance service, never said Salina. Doc, the doctor that, the facility said Salina. As the patient got worse coming this way, because we came down Eighteenth Highway, we made the decision to stop to stabilize. And that's why we stopped, and they did treat at the local hospital, and then decided it was above their capabilities, and that's why we transferred on to Salina there. But it was to stabilize, and she was much better after the stabilization at the local hospital. I just, I just give them warning to the commissioners that we don't wanna set a precedence by doing this. I'm completely fine with that.
If she would've been fine from, or stabilized, say, leaving Sylvan, they wouldn't have never stopped at Lincoln, probably, right? And would've kept going to Salina.
Well, but that doesn't really make sense, because if the patient was more stable than they were...
That's how it works, though.
But you wouldn't, you would stop then, because you wouldn't need as much acute care at a different facility. So the idea was, they thought they were originally getting a lifeline. I'm sorry if I'm divulging too much information here. I just wanted to be clear that there were extenuating circumstances. It wasn't just, oh, please take me to the hospital. It was, the doctor had said, and is it not patient's choice of where they go, in that kind of...
It is to a point, but, uh, we, we have a form that you have to fill out if it's above and beyond the closest facility, that you, as a patient, would be responsible for any additional mileage.
Which, which, I put in the motion that they will pay all of the mileage.
You can choose, if you want to, to go to Wichita Hospital, and we'll take you there.
Right, but you have to be agreeing to pay for that.
The mileage past the closest facility.
But that's still, if we did take someone from Lincoln County to Wichita...
We'll pay the closest facility, too. We'll pay all of them.
And I, I'm not talking about your call. I'm talking about...
Yeah, just in general.
In general.
Right.
So if, if we pick up somebody here in Lincoln, Kansas, and they want, they choose to go to Wichita, because they doctor there, or whatever the case may be, we can take them to Wichita. That's not a problem. But they're gonna pay the difference in mileage of what it would be to get to the closest facility, or to that facility.
Right.
And they have to pay for that out of pocket.
But even to Wichita, it's one fee, correct? Is one...
Yes, it would be one fee, yes, in that situation.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Motion carried.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, over here, I'm Brandon, uh, do we have billing policies like, if you stop for any reason and switch out, you're gonna have, your policy now is to start a new billing for, say, for a new, uh, for...
To switch out technicians, no. Um, we would not charge a new billing. But to stop at a hospital to...
But if you go into a hospital and get treatment, and then you have a new crew, say, from go to Salina, then you would have that as a new ambulance run billing, right?
If we were requested by the hospital that we stopped at to transfer on, yes, that'd be a...
So it comes down to the legalese of, uh, all the...
Who's making the decision to go on to the next facility, is what it comes down to.
It comes down to the doctor.
Which, in this, in most situations, would be the hospital making it.
That's the hospital or some doctor making it in order to do that.
So, in this particular circumstance, just talking about developing a protocol, you, the, the ambulance continued on to Salina with the patient, because the doctor or staff at the hospital suggested that. The original suggestion at the original facility was to go to Salina. So, the original route would've been to go there, but because of the logistics of going past a facility where they could stop due to the condition of the patient, they did make that stop, and they did change out staffing.
Well, it was good, in a way. They went by Lincoln, 'cause she was needing to go to the hospital, here in this case. If she would've, would've taken I-70, and, you know, we don't wanna talk about the details of her health here, but she might've been in trouble between here and Salina, you know what I'm saying, on I-70, so...
Has Lincoln County ever stopped, let's say, at Ellsworth on their way to Salina, or...
Well, we wouldn't go through Ellsworth on our way to Salina, but we've...
But that would be closer than going on to Salina, if you're on I-70.
To give you an appropriate example, we've had transfers that were supposed to go to Wichita, because the patient worsened in draft. We stopped at Salina.
And you stopped at Salina or somewhere, you know.
And then, mo- most of the time in that situation, it's outside of our county, so we stopped to stabilize in Salina. That now is Salina regionally patient, we turn around and come back here, and Salina fire transfers on. So it's, it's a similar situation, but because it's outside of our county boundaries, it's not us dealing with what called.
Right, okay, yes.
I have a question, I live just a mile aside of Lincoln County, my elder hospital's eighteen miles away, which is closer than Lincoln. My doctor's at Wilson, the ambulance service would be at Sylvan, so would they take me to Eldred as I request?
If you request it, they'll take Brandon, isn't that correct, you'll take him where they request.
Absolutely.
Well, and what he was saying is, if we're going to bypass the closest facility mileage wise, you do fill out a form.
Yes.
So. Saying that you're responsible if the insurance doesn't pay.
But I, the closest facility would be Eldred, not Lincoln. So he wouldn't have to fill out that form, because he would be closer to Ellsworth than Lincoln anyway.
Okay.
Even though it goes out of our county, that's his choice, that's still the closest facility.
So that's where you go on.
And that's what we go off of. And we don't split hairs when it's that little of a difference between Lincoln and, and that's where the appropriate part of, of that statement comes in.
So, since we're on the topic, and we actually had someone scheduled from eleven to eleven forty-five who won't be here, so we'll deal with your issue as soon as we have the county, the county attorney back, Mr. Schneider. But I guess my question is, for the ambulance protocol. If, if you are, let's say, the, the current staffing is at a function at the ball field in Lincoln. And there's an issue at the very most corner, like he just described, he lives a mile from the county line. When is the decision made to ask for a different department, a different county, to respond to that versus us?
Standbys are always secondary to nine-one-one, so if we were at a function in the ball game, as soon as that page come out, we would leave for that nine-one-one call. And then we would have dispatch page out for a secondary crew to come to the standby. So the football game, or a ball game, or whatever was going on that we were standing by for, would not have coverage in the meantime, while we waited on a second crew to respond to the standby. We would always respond to nine-one-one first, and nine-one-one always takes precedence over transfers. So if we get a call to a transfer, and prior to going to pick up the patient at the hospital.
You get another nine-one-one emergency.
We divert to the nine-one-one, nine-one-one always comes before anything.
So when do you call in, basically, call in from outside of our, our department for Mitchell County, or Ellsworth County, or another facility to respond? When does that happen?
Most of the time it's on transfer situation, if we don't have adequate staffing.
We're already doing something, and we have a transfer, so we call that transfer to a different area where they're?
Or they're requesting a paramedic, and we don't have one there.
One question, Mike, in Mike's case, where he's so close to Ellsworth, and he called nine-one-one, it comes into here. Would be the logic, would be to call Ellsworth and have them come out eighteen miles and pick him up if he was saying?
If I dial nine-one-one, where does it go? Is it tagged to, it's a six-five-eight number I have, is it tagged here?
Are you talking to home phone, or are you talking to AA cell phone?
Home or cell, they're both six-five-eights.
Okay, but there's a difference. A home phone, your E-nine-one-one goes straight to Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. A cell phone, even with the same number, is going to bounce off the closest tower and go to the closest facility according to the tower.
Which the tower's two miles away from me in Elza County.
So if you're calling on your cell phone, you might get Ellsworth County, but if you're calling on your home phone, you would get Lincoln County. Now, with that in mind, you can request an ambulance from any, any department you want. If you just happen to like Osborn County, and you want to request a, the ambulance from Osborn County, because you know the text on that, they can come here and take patients anywhere they want to.
Through a nine-one-one call?
They won't.
They, they can, but they, you can request it, but they might not necessarily.
They can, they can decline.
They reroute it to, well, when they call the nine-one-one, that Ellsworth County dispatch is getting that nine-one-one call, is then rerouting it immediately to Ellsworth, to Lincoln County. And because you're a Lincoln County resident, and you're paying an ambulance fee in Lincoln County, Lincoln County will be used paged. Now, if our resources are gone, say, we don't have anything, then they can page another through mutual aid agreements. But another county isn't just going to randomly come in and serve us our people just because that's your preference.
They can though. They, they, they shouldn't, but they can, because they're not receiving the tax dollars for it.
But the mutual aid agreement basically states that they will respond in need, not out of, um, request.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help? Did it answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
My other one is, I've got a six-five-eight number like Mike does, I live like thirty miles north, so.
So are you, like, on the border of Lincoln and Mitchell County?
Yes, right on the border, right online, Mitchell, Lincoln, Osborn, even, Osborn, Russell, we're kind of four corners.
And Hunter's kind of a different situation anyway, because they're actually in Mitchell County, but they're paged by Lincoln County for everything, so that does create some confusion, I would say, we should respond to your stuff.
Thank you for the discussion on that, I believe we're going to move on with the county attorney and Mr. Schneider's.
I need executive session for five minutes with both of you.
Okay.
Commence with those discussions.
Okay. So before we have you to the table. Make me do the motion. I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing the road agreement between the county and Mr. Schneider. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. For consult, number two, for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with county attorney. And to commission, there's present, to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
I'll second.
With motion in the second, there's no further discussion, those in favor vote aye. Aye. Motion carries.
It won't seem to go away.
I got one too.
Well, mine was bad, and then it came back, and then it went away, and.
There's been a lot of back and forth with different strains.
Yeah, cold and wet.
Do you guess I could still sit up here?
Yes, please. Don, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. I move to approve the settlement agreement as amended by county attorney this day. March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, between the parties of the county and Mr. Schneider.
Bob, there are some changes to this based on my discussions with the commissioners. One of the, which is that fair weather road, the all-weather road that we talked about.
They can discuss that in discussion, if you want a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a discussion, or, excuse me, a motion and a second for the settlement agreement between the county and Mr. Schneider. Now, is there any further discussion? I would just like to say that it would be up to the other party to agree to the changes that we have approved, the county attorney has done on behalf of the county. So if there are no further questions at this time, I'll take a vote, all those in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
The only, the only changes was fair weather roads, because we don't have any all-weather roads except.
Because all-weather can be asphalt.
I did talk to the highway department, they would like to be out there tomorrow to do this, but there's three foot drifts on the road. So, while this doesn't mean any, I mean, this means something, but for them to set a timetable, I think you and them need to be in communication. And I've asked Bob and Michael to do that, so that you're apprised of it, and once that dries out, I think that that's what's going to be happening, so.
And this is what, the three inches of gravel, that's kind of what was in, in the other thing, and I'm fine with that.
But they said, based on what the road is now with the drifts and things, they don't think they could meet the timetable that was set in there.
With this weather, you know, now, man.
And if we don't have a wet spring, but I think we're all a little bit hesitant about that, because.
It's going to be wet for all spring, because there's so much moisture in the ground.
When there's a bad winter, there's a bad spring.
You know, springs are open up, that's going to be muddy from now till.
Well, and there's some water issues up their way, which has contributed to this problem many ways that they're aware of.
Well, when, when it warms up a little bit, that road's going to thaw out, it's going to be just a small, a little mess.
Awesome, yeah, we know that.
I mean, it's going to take a little time to.
Right, and so I think that's, that was the only reason for that. So I guess I would just encourage you to maintain contact with the highway department, because they realize that this is a priority, and they need to get it done, and once the payment is made. If there's any problems, we just need to be known about it, so.
Mr. Cragle, do you have any comments on this right there?
No, Steve is satisfied with it.
I think so, I think it, you know, do what we need to do, and I'll.
Was that, you got any other input on this, or what?
I liked your ideas before, where you blended something with the gravel to make it better.
Well, try to blend the gravel, yes.
Yeah, to be, to be a better product design.
Well, hopefully we can do that, sometimes I can't always do that. Oh, yeah, blend it with, we can get sand and rock and with that clay, it's hard, I know, you know these roads.
I do, you know, new gravel's always tough, you take three reins and a waller and make it into something, so.
Yeah, I do, you need to?
Yeah, so that way they have more to worry about.
Okay.
I'm just going to state this, the highway department is not on the agenda because I didn't put them on the agenda, so I apologize. I have them on the paper agenda, but apparently I did not put them in the computer, so that is my fault. I believe I did that.
Well, I think because she was doing everything on our behalf, they're still included in the negotiation, and this is.
I think I just had everybody kind of scooched up and.
That's all right. This one's for us.
So I did apologize to them, and I, they said they were working on it now anyway, so it was okay.
So just for those of you who were in attendance about the prior discussion about the agreement, we had our county attorney revise a few things on, on behalf of the county, as far as changing some wording. We're not going to guarantee anyone an all-weather road, because that constitutes basically concrete or block shop, yes, asphalt. And so we changed it to fair weather, and then we changed some dates as far as deadlines, we didn't give ourselves a deadline, because we can't make that guarantee. So that protects the county, but we still are moving forward with the proposal of the upfront money paid, and then five years instead of the original obligation of him paying into a kitty for that. There's going to be no payment, but no responsibility for the county for material for those five years, starting June first, or, ending June first, twenty twenty-four. Anything further?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to have Carl be excused to go up and honorize that and attest it, so we could have a copy for them today.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, what's the intersection that you're talking about, just so, I like to go out and check it out for EMS.
It's Union and Fiftieth to the north, and then they have a home that goes Forty-Fifth Jets to the northwest.
Okay.
And there's a home built and a, and a cabin for hunters on that throughway. So the gravel surface will only go to the driveway of the home, and it won't continue on, which goes up to, what is that next road there?
Uh, should be back to Wheat Drive.
Wheat, yeah.
Yeah, back to Wheat Drive.
When, when the weather clears up, I'd like to go out there in my personal vehicle and just check it out for you.
When it's cold like this, you can drive on it.
We have another, we have another question in the back. Sure.
I have a question, definition of fair weather road, and this is now part of the county policy as a whole, fair weather road?
I would like to address the resolution that we do have pertaining to this type of a situation, but we do have a definition of fair weather road in the agreement, would you read that?
Yeah, fair weather road is hereby defined as an earthen road with gravelly soil, or an earthen road with a gravel layer on top that permits weather used depending upon rainfall and soil type. Such road is negotiable only during fair weather as opposed to all-weather. All-weather, well, you know what we got now out there, we, I'm a substitute mail carrier, and there's some of these gravel roads now, when it gets sawed out and that, you'll have to four-wheel drive on it, maybe with a big truck, and maybe can't even get through that. Because some of them are even, because it's going to be slimy and really bad. So all-weather, in my opinion, means like asphalt or cement, that would be all-weather, because, you know.
The other thing too is, you know, in the past years ago, there are roads that aren't traveled, that don't need to be opened, and where the tax payers money on.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, a lot of those up in the hills and that, they don't even do it now. But we, we did want all-weather, because that could, could mean that you could get, you know, like now, we got two, when this saws out, it's going to be unbelievably muddy, a lot of them roads are gridded and gravel roads. Because with all this freezing and snow and ice and rain combined, it's wet out there, you know that.
Been there.
Yeah. So fair weather means, you know, common sense, when it's decent weather, it's, they're travelable.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda, at eleven forty-five, which gives us fifteen minutes, would be Dan Haner from the Noxious Weed Department. I would suggest that we take a fifteen-minute recess unless someone has something they'd like to discuss at this time. If not.
I just wanted to ask the applications for the EMS director.
Well, we're going to have a discussion, I'm sorry, I don't know if you're here on your own time or not, but we are having a discussion at twelve fifteen to twelve thirty on the interview panel for that situation, would you like to just?
I'll just wait till.
Come on that, thank you.
Who's the next one on your scheduled, uh, agenda?
Here's Mr. Haner right now.
Oh, I guess we can squeeze you in if you're ready now.
Are you ready for it?
You just ruined my recess for fifteen minutes, I was going to.
We could take one, you want to take one for five?
Yeah, let's do five minutes.
We're going to do five, we'll be right back.
All right, we're going to continue with the meeting, we have Dan Haner here from the Noxious Weed Department.
I wanted to say good morning, and I left you packets with, that was going to kind of give you basically an update of what's been going on with the weed department for the last, you know, year. What we're kind of looking at for directions for this year. If you kind of follow me along on the packet, it's, the state actually requires the Noxious Weed Department to, you know, have all of the goals of to treat Noxious Weeds within the counties. The commissioner's responsibility to, you know, provide, uh, budgeting and, and, so if we go along on far as, you know, like, my job description is on the next page, as far as the, the. Weed supervisor shall consult and cooperate with the state division, so there's a lot of things I have to do to meet state regulations with licenses and continuing education, and, and, you know, the goal of the weed department is to work towards the control and eradication of Noxious Weeds. Not so much as, you know, we're required to, we're not really required to spay the, the county right of ways, but, you know, it's something that's been kind of incorporated into the job, but.
Well, that's interesting, I've never read this part before, under D, it actually says, the county commissioners, with the aid of their weed supervisor, shall make by February fifteenth, an annual weed eradication progress report, so that's what you're talking about. But we've never really been part of that process since I've been here.
And that's correct, and I'd usually just basically do that, you know, myself, and, and I've prepared it today. A lot of it is, uh, with the budget, uh, our expenditures revenue, uh, actually is reported of the, they give us a lot of sections to be surveyed for weeds, and, you know, we're required to report the acres back to, to the Kansas Department of Ag on that, so. I have it prepared today, and it's an annual, uh, uh, progress report for the year, and basically for last year. And to meet, uh, John, uh, approval with the state, I have to have this done every year.
Right.
So, okay, just saying we have to do the government aid registration, and then we're actually a pesticide dealer. And then we have to have our, I have to have a commercial pesticide applicator license, and I'm currently current on all the licenses.
I do have a question about that, we've been having the highway department spray, is that, is that permissible to have that be done under their license?
As long as he's underneath my direction, I'm able to contact him, uh, by phone, radio, or within, you know, contact, now. It does put my license in, we, the highway department's had, given me one person for the, basically, spring and summer months. And then they have covered the salary, the wages of that person. Now, if he would happen to, you know, cause a liability issue, it falls back on my license, so.
You got to be careful there.
Yeah, well, and the other thing, I mean, I've, I've trained him, you know, I've given him, you know, supervision and all that, but it's one that he actually isn't licensed.
What employee is doing that?
Emma Howe is the one that was done it last year.
But it's been different?
Well, yeah, the last couple of years before that was Dwight Watson, last couple of years before that was like Joe Schultz, I mean, it's kind of changed throughout the years.
You think they should have a, a, a commercial pesticide applicator license?
My biggest thing is, I don't really have a lot of time if I'm going around, you know, I'm. My biggest thing is I don't really have a lot of time if I'm going around, you know, I'm, at this time, I'm spraying west of Highway fourteen, he's spraying east, which is, you know, two-fifths, three-fifths. Uh, there's a lot more to do on the west side, seem like by the time I, you know, go-go-go on a short window, I don't really have a lot of time running around and check behind him to see, you know, make sure he's doing a really good, you know, adequate job. I mean, I've, I've prepped it and, and.
I mean.
Gave him, you know, everything he should be doing, he's supposed to be doing, but to actually go behind him and, you know, check his work, I, I don't or haven't.
What is the process by which you coordinate with the highway department for mowing?
For mowing? Uh, usually when I'm out like spraying, I'll let the area, uh, grader man know that I'm in his area if there's a way he could avoid that. We ran into this problem in the past where I'll no more spray it, they'll either come along and mow it, uh, which, you know, does.
Defeat the purpose.
Yeah, beats the purpose of it.
Yeah.
But then, you know, they got, you know, there, I ran into a couple deals before about, a lot of the weeds are in that first three foot in the windrow. It seemed like, uh, they'll come along and grate it right as soon as I'm done, you know, or within a day or two, uh.
Is that why you can coordinate schedules on when they're, when they're grading versus.
I might be in that area and then they're like, you know, they've got, say, a lot of times it's raining, we're both going, you know, one is drying out, so they're like, you know, well, it ain't been bated for quite a while either, so. There needs to be some improvements on that area, but I can't really say.
Maybe you could get with, uh, down the schedule, like when you're scheduling, um, spraying, they wouldn't be mowing.
And I'm.
You could probably get together and work out some schedules on areas on that.
I've, I've done that, called in before and it's always one of them and darn, he's mowing or, you know, two days later.
Have you been shown the program?
Yeah.
The highway department, the three, mobile three-one-one? What do you think about that program as far as?
Uh, I'd, I'd reported some things on it, it's just one of them, uh, I'm not sure everybody's on the same page about it.
Well, I'm not asking about employees' feelings, I'm saying if, if you as the supervisor of the weed department, let's say, how do you feel about that particular program's ability to help consolidate your responsibilities and organize them on a digital format?
It'd be a way to, uh, you know, notify them of, of a problem area more for them than notify me of a problem area than.
Right, right, because the, the person who's in, on that route knows that route, whereas you're just visiting that route temporarily.
And I don't have a problem with checking that every day and find out, you know, if there's problem areas, I mean, I know the routes, I've been doing a long time and I kind of know where every, you know, where I need to be, all the roads and everything, but, uh. It all comes down to one of them, how much are we gonna spend or how much, you know, budget do we have to, to take it to the next level of, I mean, we're doing all we can with what trucks and, and personnel we have right now, with two of us, I mean, we got two trucks and.
So maybe I'm jumping ahead of your packet.
Yeah, okay, well, anyway, I, I drew up a, a page here that says two thousand nineteen, it's kind of a, uh, annual Noxious Weed Management Program, a plan. Uh, it's something kind of generic, I stuck to it about every year, but, uh, it's, you know, glance at it or whatever real quick, but. I mean, we're using all of our available resources and we're spraying approximately a thousand miles, you know, on both sides of the road. So you're talking, we're getting, we're getting fifteen hundred miles on a general broadcast spring. So, we're getting fifteen hundred, somewhere in there, every year.
Now, if you go, if you go along, you don't see any weeds or any noxious weeds, do you, you don't, you not spraying that or you still spray everything?
It's, we've been spraying it solid, the, the general application, the first application usually is in May to June.
Do you spot, mostly just spot spray where the problem's bad or do you spray it every?
I spray, I spray it total.
You spray all the roads?
I spray all the roads.
You just go drive and spread?
Not only is the, doesn't seem like the noxious weeds are a problem, it seem like your COSA.
Oh, COSA, pigweed.
Yeah, pigweed is always a big time.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
So I just flip forward to this two thousand nineteen bid sheet, do we not have bids yet?
I have not.
Okay, that's, that was my question to the highway department, I suppose he may be forwarding that question on to you.
Okay, yeah.
I just asked, had some questions about that.
Yeah.
I, I know, I just, I saw the comparison you did over the last couple of years of what we've spent on chemical total and there, I had some questions and this is not my area of expertise by any means, so you can talk to me later.
Well, far as, I mean, on the bids, uh, you know, I've kind of based it off of what our usage is the last couple of years. Uh, in the last couple of years, we've sent out, I've sent out five different bids to CVA, PostRock, One Eighty-One Ag, Crop Service and, uh, one of the suppliers, Van Deese. Uh, I usually only get two bids back from One Eighty-One or Van Deese.
Do you know why that is? Have you ever asked other companies why they don't bid just because it's not enough quantity?
They, they claim they're getting it from the same places I can and they're not, you know, they're not gonna make no money on it, so they just don't wanna, you know, do what.
They're not acting as a wholesale or another business.
Right, right, yeah, the major suppliers, which is Van Deese is one of the major suppliers in the area now. Somebody else may have some, you know, others, but those are the locals that I can think of and then, and the major suppliers that I dealt with for several years. Uh, I submitted bids out last year. I mean, there was a few of them that were, you know, five cents or fifty cents, I mean, I went with the lowest, so, I mean, they go, do everything.
Because you know it's the same product, basically, so it's just come down to cost.
I have a, I, you know, I'm getting a bid sheet, uh, ready to send out here this week, uh, probably first of next week, but.
Can we go back to what you said about two thousand eighteen? That was the purchase that was made in two thousand eighteen was covered, I have twenty-five thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars. That was chemical cost to spray roadside and you have the mileage, is this the mileage of each or what does that mean? Five, hundred thirty?
That's actually total gallons of product.
Oh, gallons, okay.
Yeah, that's the total gallon of project, project, product. We, uh, we spent right at twenty-five thousand dollars worth to treat the roads. And it's increased, you know, I'm normally somewhere around at fifteen, somewhere in through there, but, uh, my biggest increase this last year was, I mean, I put a really big effort on trying to eliminate some of the Johnson grass. Cause, I mean, I don't, I really don't get a lot of complaints into the office, I mean, I don't.
And I will say, just from being in my seat, I think people don't know where to go with that. I think in the past, they've gone to commissioners and, because I know I've received some of those phone calls or questions about how it's being done or what the protocol is, which is fine, I don't mind fielding those, but like I said, I don't know that much about it. Maybe we need to have a little more communication as far as how they put in those requests or, you know, in specific areas, what they're experiencing versus, I mean, it's a lot of miles for one person to cover and know what's where.
Right. Especially a lot of times I'll get complaint calls in or if I get, you know, a call back in, uh, but I have a complaint form that I fill out when I get back. Usually it's just written on a piece of paper and I get back and spraying the guy.
Is that it?
Carrier, yeah.
Do I have one?
Yeah.
Is it toward the back or?
Yeah, so I should, uh, uh, number on it, but it's somewhere in the middle, but this is basically a sample of a complaint form. Somebody called in the office and.
And that's what you can fill out?
Yeah, I fill out and if I need to notify the landowner, hey, you know, you've got my sizzle or whatever.
In your field.
Has been complained about, you know.
So how many calls do you think you're getting a year? You've been doing this for a while, you have that idea?
I maybe get ten calls on my sizzles, the rest of the call, I don't, I don't really get any other calls.
Okay.
Like buying weed and stuff?
No, I, everybody seem like, I don't know, it's a common, common problem, so it's not a issue prob, like that's a big issue on that, but. But I'll, uh, I'll fill out this complaint form and then this is the sample of the next page is a sample of what I've sent to the, say, to the landowner and then it's always marked on it. Yeah, and then it's, I mark it on a, on a map of, I'll highlight the, the map and the map's kept.
Oh, yeah, so you gave me an example.
Yeah, and that's kept in a file.
Yeah.
So I'll know next year, you know, hey, this guy, you know, I've heard about this, you know, three, two or three, couple of years in a row or something that.
Okay.
You know, he's not following through.
So, but then the ten calls that we're referencing right now, those are landowners.
Yeah.
How, what kind of phone calls, how often or how many are made from your route driver, your blade operators on their routes? Who's contacted, not who, but how many times are you getting contacted in a given year by our own, our own employees?
A couple, I mean, I'm not really getting very many from here, no.
So they really need to be instructed that they could, they could, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? They could designate some problems and then pass those on to you so that you're aware of them, because they're all at their own time on that same route.
I've, I mean, our phones are on every day.
Well, wouldn't this be part of the reason that we consolidated the Noxious Weed with the highway department?
Yes.
Okay.
How's that working out, okay?
Well, it's working out.
Okay.
What is different now as far as before that consolidation took place? Um, I mean, I find it interesting, you actually, you gave us the, the statute here two thirteen sixteen, that's Kansas statute, correct? That you.
Kevin and I are independent workers and we've been doing it a long time and we really don't require a lot of supervision to be honest, I mean.
But what it sounds like you actually need is coordination.
We need that.
So if there's someone that's supposed to be consolidating efforts between the two departments.
Far as the spraying program and everything, I, I consolidate, I do everything as far as, you know, where to go and what to do.
You don't have any interaction from the other department on that, do you?
No. Other than they provide a, you know, he provides a helper, so.
A helper and, do they service your equipment?
Uh, if it's a simple wheel change or something, I usually.
Take it there.
Could take it to, you know, yeah, or, or I'll have spear do it or something if they're busy or whatever, but, uh, if it's something major, then we get looked at, but, uh. Our only problem, the biggest problem we have is on purchasing, I mean, we're gonna need a new truck, we're gonna need a new backhoe, we're gonna need purchasing help on some of this and.
Backhoe for the weed department?
Well, for the landfill, yeah, it's the landfill, it's just a.
The light, the latest proposal that we received from the highway department is that the landfill purchased the highway department backhoe.
Oh, okay.
Um, that wasn't mentioned to you.
And that's something I'll have to take up with Kerry, cause I really don't know where we're at on it all, other than, you know, we're still using what we got and getting by with what we got, so I'm just saying down the future, but. And we're in the same position with one of our spray trucks, it's, you know, it's a nineteen eighty-nine and it's, we've used it several years and we're gonna need a new one before too long, so.
So is there an educational class that, so, so for someone like me, if, if I became an equipment operator and I got into a blade, I mean, I know what Johnson grass is and I know what pigweed is, but let's just say, is there a class where you can learn the specifics more about that?
There's basic schools that you can attend to try to obtain your certification.
They teach you pretty good on this when you get this license here.
But as far as the.
Where I'm going with this is not necessarily to be licensed, but if our blade men aren't giving you notification often as far as, hey, I was on this route and this is where all the Johnson grass is spreading. I mean, I've had a lot of complaints about Johnson grass, I'm just gonna go with that one, okay? And it's like, well, by the time it heads out, that's when they send the mowers through and then the mower spreads the seed and shoots it clear into the field. So in that instance, I mean, I feel like maybe then we're, we are ultimately putting the responsibility on the blade man, but are they educated or is there some sort of education we can do to help them facilitate that information and get it to you?
I think it's just emphasis that, you know, if they got a problem area, they just need to be calling me and, you know, I can, usually on complaint areas, I, I mean, I move them to the top of list, I jump on it right away, cause I'd get so few that I can shuffle around and get, you know, get some of these holes right away.
They don't coordinate with you too much now, huh, the blade people saying, hey, there's Johnson grass over.
Yeah, that's kinda where it comes down, I mean, they're busy with their routes and doing their thing, so.
Well, he said we's getting approximately ten-ish phone calls from the, from the landowners, but less than that from our own highway department.
And, you know, he talks Johnson grass, I mean, far as comparison and everything, I mean, I realize it's, you know, seem like become, the more we do on the, the broadleaf weed spraying, the more we're eliminating the competition for the Johnson grass to grow. Now, we've, I've stepped it up here in the last, you know, couple of years and sure, last year, I mean, as far as our, you know, spending on it, I mean, we spent almost twelve thousand dollars on.
What are you using for Johnson grass?
Uh, I've been using, uh, Plateau and.
You've got some of that.
MSMA, yeah. The MSMA is runs like thirty a gallon, it's, it's, it's a good product, it's, it's more of a, uh, it doesn't have any carryover residual. The Plateau has a carryover and residual. The thing is about that MSMA, it won't mix with the other products, uh, and so I've talked about maybe doing, Plateau's came off on the price quite a bit, it was around three hundred a gallon, now it's a hundred and twenty-five, which is still a lot. But I've been talking about doing, adding in the Plateau an initial first spraying. Uh, we've usually just been going out and, and spot spraying on Johnson grass. Now, if I add that, you know, Plateau in there, we're gonna, you know, we're talking probably eight or ten thousand dollar, you know, beyond above what I've already spent, so.
I mean, a question in the back there.
Yeah, my question is on Johnson grass, you answered part of the chemical you're using.
Yeah.
Uh, I've seen it increase in Johnson grass in my area, uh, over the years I've been there. One of the issues is with the shredders, they shred it, the seed drops on the shredder.
Right, right, mowers, yeah.
I haven't seen it really controlled. Uh, the other thing is, I guess my question would be, if you're spraying roads, what about sensitive crops? What's your policy on that?
Yeah, that's another always issue we're running into as far as, you know, liability, I mean, it's, it's one of them, I almost won't, uh, I'm, I'm almost won't spray it if it's long alfalfa or soybeans or, you know. So that is at being a, you know, yeah. And most of the landowners, I mean, they can do a, you know, uh, everything's chemical farming anymore as far as, you know, spraying with the round up and no till and seem like you can kind of keep it out of their fields, but it's in the ditches is the, the problem, so, uh.
I guess I'd like to, spot spraying on Johnson grass would be about the only way with the rides on, it's really tough to control Johnson grass.
I totally agree with you. You know, we've, we've, we've basically run out and do a complete broadcast spray and then come back in usually middle, later June, July, somewhere in there and, and go around and hit the prop, you know, areas of Johnson grass. I do see, you know, as far as in areas that where Johnson grass is only as wide as the mower, I mean, you'll look out and it's not past the mower, so we're suppressing the, the grown grass and that time of year is the warm season grass on the Johnson grass. So it seem like it, uh, it'll be in the mower width and not beyond that mower width a lot of times. It's definitely a hard one to control, so.
Yeah, you can just try to, you're not gonna get it all rid of it, but you're gonna, you can kind of destabilize it so it doesn't spread more and it's rather about it.
Right, and, and that's why I said on the, if I have a complaint in in a focus area, I'd, you know, rather put our efforts in to that area as opposed to being out on some, you know, off-road that nobody, it's not a high priority, I guess, somebody.
What's that other chemical you use on Johnson grass besides MSMA?
Plateau.
Does it have a drip problem?
It has a residual, well, they'll, they'll all wind drift, but it doesn't volatate.
Like MSMA doesn't hurt much and nothing else, but would Plateau?
Uh, it would kill other crops.
It would, like alfalfa or beans, huh?
Yeah, yeah, with the.
You gotta be really careful.
It doesn't volatate, which means it doesn't produce that volatile gas and move off with the wind.
Yeah, it doesn't or does?
Doesn't.
Oh, that's good, doesn't volatate.
Not like your, you know, esters, yeah, bandeau esters.
Yes, yeah, or, yeah, two forty. Okay.
Well, I guess my, you know, we still have some inventory, I'm gonna go ahead and send out those bid sheets, uh, and then I'm here today, like I said, to get the proposal signed to get to the board of that. These packets are for you to keep.
And then you made a mention about purchasing, um, so, like the backhoe is the landfill, but you said about a truck, is that your spray truck?
Right, yeah.
And what is your proposal there?
Uh, I haven't put any figures together on anything other than it's gonna be something, we've got, at the time, we have forty thousand dollars left over in capital outlay fund, uh.
Are you saying at the end of the year?
It sounds like a lot, right, we did. It sounds like a lot of money, but a one-ton duly with a spray rig and everything, Riley County just set one up that was over a hundred thousand, but, uh.
That's brand new.
It's just something we're gonna have to think about, you know, maybe not this year, but for sure in the near future. The trucks I got now, we're gonna try to, you know, get by with them again another year.
When you, uh, get a spray truck to you, but it's buy a regular truck and then outfit it yourself with the spray equipment?
Yeah.
You don't buy it already, uh, set up as a spray.
I haven't been able to actually find one that's set up and ready to go that's not wore out, I mean, you can get a lot of, you know, field sprayers, but roadside sprayers is a different.
Yeah, right. So you buy, you just get a truck and then you, you set up?
Add on the.
You got booms on it and stuff?
No, no, it's boom, it's boomless.
Boomless, but you got like side sprayers?
Yeah.
That shoot into the ditch.
Shoot out the right side.
And you can adjust those with nozzles or adjustable type thing?
Yeah.
Do you want us to slide something?
Yeah, I have to sign up on that, submit it into water bag. But, and our spraying is all, once we, once we complete an area, it's all, uh, it's marked on a map and then it's also, we're doing GPS, so everything's GPS, so.
GPS logged. Now, do you put anything out in the fall, like we do, like for, uh, pre-emergent stuff, which will hopefully, you know, like, you could, like you would put pastures for with like tordon?
I put tordon out in certain areas that are a problem area.
Yeah, and also, like you would do like, uh, the other pre-emergent type stuff.
Well, I did that, I did that Plateau, so I'll be kinda curious to see how it turns out.
For Johnson grass, bindweed or?
For Johnson grass, yeah.
You don't have too many problems like my cissels in the road.
No, not really. Just a few areas, but, uh, like I said, as far as the spraying goes, everything's mapped and GPS, uh, now, the GPS will really don't follow it along a whole lot, other than if we last two, couple of years ago or whatever, we had a complaint and we went back and looked, no, we didn't spray by that area, so it kept us, it's a, it's a backup for a liability issue. I mean, it ain't something.
Is that the same GPS program that the highway department?
It's, they've installed it, so.
And it's, and that's all coordinated?
Yeah.
Under the same program? So, so we're paying for GPS on each individual
Truck.
Truck and vehicle, but we're also paying for the mobile three-one-one program, but you don't have an iPod for that, or you do?
I do.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a separate one for the landfill and the noxious weed?
No, I do, I have one, yeah, that one was assigned to me.
Okay.
But I don't, uh, I don't actually utilize this GPS, uh, on a daily basis, uh, it's just something, I guess, we have as a.
You want us to date it?
Somebody come up with the idea, that, you know, it was something for a skate check.
It's the, do you want that dated?
No, today's fine.
Okay.
It's not.
Now, Joe's not here to, Joe's not here to date, does he need to be signed up?
Uh, I would think, I would do it. Thank you. I don't know if there's anything, I put my phone number on the, in the front.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
And you will be getting bid soon, I assume?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get that within the next week, I usually have a, a delivery date somewhere on the first of April.
Okay.
You know, that's kinda what I work it out as, cause we're not usually typically spraying mid-May, somewhere in there, mid, uh, mid-May on.
Okay.
So, but my phone number's in there, and like I said, if something comes up, just
Okay.
Call the office, my cell's in there.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Open for whatever we can do, I'm a team player, whatever we can do for the betterment of county.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, uh, we have Ben Stagman for Lincoln Senior Center. Dan.
Oh, I came with the request, I know at the last meeting I ever said there was like fourteen thousand five hundred dollars left in the two thousand eighteen budget, and I was just gonna request eighty-five hundred dollars, which would make ours the thirty-one-five that we used to get. Is, is just basically what I had.
From last year.
From last year, yeah, we had done issue.
That was the missing amount.
Yeah, that was a missing amount, you know, this next year, that's up in the air.
Hey, you're a senior center board, right?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Who else is on, who else is on that? I, do you know, because that came up today earlier, we're just curious.
Deb Ortiz, uh.
Oh, yeah, she was here at the meeting.
Yeah, and Jolene.
Oh, yes.
Me, and then since Jo- uh, forgot her name.
Well, I did, it's, it's no big deal if you didn't know.
Kathy Moss was, but then she went to the Lincoln County Council on Aging.
Okay.
So I don't think we've replaced, we got a meeting this month, so I don't think we replaced anybody.
Well, that's fine.
So it's just a four-four support person?
There's, I think there's one other, but we met for some long, can't answer your question.
How do you do, do you not do monthly meetings?
No.
How, how?
Annual.
Just one annual meeting?
Yeah.
So you guys don't meet, not only once a year?
No.
Is that basically just to come up with the budget?
Yeah.
You don't do any decision making?
Not really, I mean, we may have an emergency meeting sometime or something.
But really like the?
If we need to, but if there's something we need to decide, but otherwise, no.
So currently, De- Deb Ortiz is your treasurer?
Yeah, I'm the treasurer.
Oh, oh, you're the treasurer, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What is she, the secretary?
Secretary, yeah.
Who's president?
Jolene.
Okay. So the day-to-day activity is done by the director, which is Becky's, I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, do you, so do you pay bills and payroll, is that what the treasurer does? And you do that monthly and you don't need to have a meeting to get board approval for your bill?
And I make a report every month and give them to.
Because the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, okay.
I make up a report every month.
And so one of the questions that I've kind of had, and it came up earlier, the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging is the provider of the Friendship Meals Program. Okay, and, and Lincoln Senior Center is taking county bill levy funds and then subsidizing the pay rate of the employees who are performing the function to put that meal program on, okay, I think we all understand that. Now, the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging is requesting dues, so to speak, for lack of a better word, but Lincoln Senior Center isn't paying any of that, correct? So those dues for that organization right now are being paid partially by the Health Department and then by the Council on Aging.
The Health Department's not paying for the dues, the Health Department's just paying for the Senior Care Act Fund, which the county general used to pay for, and we moved it into theirs so that they wouldn't lose their grant funding.
Right.
They need to increase their spending in order to be able to continue to grant funding.
And the Health Department at any time can contact North Central Flint Hills AAA and request their services for any of their clients, so there is a give and take there between the Health Department, they're available to be able to use as far as a resource. I guess my question is, there's a lot of confusion about what the relationship is supposed to be between North Central Flint Hills AAA and the Council on Aging. So the fact that the Council on Aging is paying them and doesn't really have a direct resource through them, other than someone attends their meetings, um, wouldn't it be more appropriate that if there's going to be a fee paid to this organization, that it would come out of the budget that is designed for the Senior Center, who is facilitating that relationship?
It could, I guess, I mean, um, it's just been this way for
I understand.
Ever, I mean, I, I, you know.
I'm not saying there's a reason why, I'm just questioning, couldn't it be?
It could be, it could be put into our budget, you know, it could be figured into ours and we pay it, you know, it's, you know.
I mean, some of, some of that.
Cause the reason, the way it was originally, you know, the money was given to Lincoln County Council on Aging, then they gave us our budget part of it, and then they took care of everything else from then on, so we didn't, you know, so it was just, that's just the way it's been. But it could be changed, yeah.
I guess, yeah, I'm saying, there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding as far as what the relationship is between the Council on Aging and North Central Flint Hills. And really, there isn't a relationship there.
Not really.
Other than they've been choosing to write checks to that group, and then that's the group that actually facilitates the meals program through the Senior Center, and then they have other resources you can utilize, they have an office in Nussellina, and they have an office in Manhattan, and they will come out and perform functions as far as doing, um, presentations.
Shick, yeah, the, the shick program came out, they came out for it and different things.
Exactly, yes.
And they attend the meetings.
Right.
Really, does the Lincoln Council on Aging still fund the Senior Center, it used to, right? Or Lincoln County on the Aging would have the money, right, then?
Yeah, Lincoln County Council would do their budget.
Distribute you guys' money and then also Sylvan to, used to, so, is that still going on, or was we gonna fund it directly?
So historically, I'll just try to bring you up to speed, historically, the county is, is able to take up to two mills, that's how it's worded, up to two, so in the past, it was always just the two mills, whatever that dollar amount ended up to be, and then the county would give that to the Council on Aging, the Council on Aging was presenting a budget that included their expected dispersment to the two Senior Centers. Now, over the years, that two mill that had been repeatedly distributed to the LCCA, ended up a hundred thousand of it in a savings account. So there was a lot of questioning and discrepancy about why the money was being collected by the commission and given to an organization that was then putting it in their savings account. So this past year, we received three separate budgets, two times now, this is the second year, two thousand nine.
I think we're working on another one.
To, to revise your current one.
Yeah.
Maybe you might wanna include next year's, uh, North Central Flint Hills fees, whatever you would.
Okay, okay.
We ran into a problem today because Council on Aging actually paid the deficit between what we agreed to pay as a county and what they had requested from that organization, so LCCA just paid the bill.
They shouldn't have.
Can I say something about that admin, admin fee? A very long time ago, the county paid that admin fee, a hundred percent. And when the Council on Aging got the second mill, it was determined that if they were going to get all this money, then maybe they should help pay for some of that expense. And so they hopped it, and then, maybe that was the, the half mill or whatever it was, but then when they ended up with their two mill, then it decided, they said, we have more than enough money, we'll take that expense from the county. So originally, the county was responsible, and I'm assuming that if we contacted all the other counties within this, this area that it participated in, that it would be the county that was issuing out the check, I'm not necessarily sure it should necessarily be the Senior Center. Maybe that's something that you guys go back to saying the county will be responsible for it and we will hold.
That comes out of our line item for senior services, I understand what you're saying.
Does that make sense?
Right, because we're ultimately helping facilitate that meal program. My concern is that the Council on Aging is not, yet they have maintained this relationship with North Central Flint Hills to which they believe they are a subordinate entity, and that is creating an issue. Um, when the Council on Aging is one hundred percent funded by the county, there is no other organization that can have any, exercise any authority over them and how they conduct their business. So that brings a concern to the table for me, because there's been a lot of discrepancy on what the function of the Council on Aging is, and I think that's still up for debate. Um, so, okay, then maybe that's a good suggestion, if we are going to pay a fee, we can approve that amount that we are going to pay as a commission, just like we do to North Central Kansas Mental Health, or, or Central Kansas Mental Health, I always say that wrong, um, or whatever other organization that we're paying to. I understand, that's probably a good suggestion. Um, the other thing I would like to ask, I understand you're here about the, the dispersment that we haven't made yet, but I would like to ask why we have you at the table. Do you believe that the Lincoln Senior Center is capable of facilitating the services that have been provided by the Council on Aging in the past? And the, the first and foremost thing that they've done is shick, which we've now learned, all of us in progression, that shick can be performed by anyone who volunteers to do that, take that class.
They'll see the class and, and do it.
That's mainly what they've been providing and what they've been existing to do, do you think that it's possible that Lincoln Senior Center can absorb those responsibilities? Of course, we know it comes at a price.
Well, so I can say it's worth a try, I mean, I don't know how it's gonna work out, you know, it's, 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 we're kinda in that gray area right now. And stuff, so we're working on that, and I don't know how, you know, whether, if Becky would wanna continue to do it that way, you know, cause they asked her to work for him and stuff like that, you know, it's gonna be, it's a trial by error for right now.
Yeah, she's doing both.
Yeah, yeah.
You could almost do it as one, and she's still in both, she's still in both.
You know, it's.
Of course, she may not always be there, like Deb Ortiz said, right now, they have her as both employee for both, they may not in the future, then they may want to have her.
Yeah, right, you know, it's, it's, it's a trial by error right now.
It would, it would seem, it seemed to me to consolidate services, I may be wrong here, but like I was saying before, we have four entities in Lincoln County for three thousand people, and I don't know how many elderly, but I'm not against those if they're doing a function, but if we could combine and maybe save little, because you're just, it'd make it more efficient.
Well, I can understand that.
Because you're, you got, you got one entity, you handle it all instead of two, two entities.
And I think the County Council on Aging is trying to figure that out now, you know, whenever, if I wanna say blew up.
Well, yeah, yeah, and I feel like.
And now, now we gotta figure out how to make it run.
Right, and there's a lot of confusion there, because I think that the people that are there now have good intents and they, and they want to have a purpose, um, but that purpose isn't clearly defined yet, and if I look at it from a bird's eye view, just looking at the money, which is what the commission is in charge of, here we have this money and we're giving it to three different organizations, all of which somewhat intertwine as far as who they're servicing and what they can provide. So if we're going to have the same employee, which we already do, for two of the organizations, why does that employee have to have two separate employers? That's my question, you know, it's one, it's one person, could they not perform two separate functions in their duty as an employee, I personally think so.
It's, it's possible.
Especially in Lincoln County, we're not that big, if we were Celine County and you'd have
Yeah.
ten to thousands, or thousands of people to deal with, a lot more stuff, you'd say maybe overwhelming, but I think here in a small county, it, it's habitable.
And the prime example to me is, you know, when, when we receive the, the LCCA budget, the Council on Aging, that says they want, I forget what it was, a hundred or two hundred dollars a month for rent, we're giving that money to them, and then ultimately, they're just passing that money over to the Lincoln Senior Center, so
Through the pass and money.
Yeah, it kinda doesn't make sense to have all those extra steps in the way.
It's not efficient, it's just more bureaucratic and more bureaucracy, and it seems if you cut bureaucracy, you're gonna, if you maybe not save a lot of money, but you're gonna save efficiency on it, and it's more streamlined of what we're doing. It'd be more understandable to all of us, cause I don't know what the hell we're doing in all this Council on Aging stuff, and I'm not against it, it's just I don't, because we, like I said, we have four entities, and, and I'm sure they're all good and doing good for seniors, and that's good. It's just, why do we do four, four entities?
And honestly, the Lincoln Senior Center has continued its meal program successfully, the Sylvan Senior Center has grown in its organization, but the Council on Aging has had resignations and quarreling and funding problems and hoarding pockets of money. I mean, there are a lot of issues with that particular board in the past, that, again, this is, I feel like the people who are there now feel like it's targeted at them, but they're new in the seat. I'm talking about the function of the board as it has
Been prior.
Right, I mean, there's, there have been just so, so many questions, unanswered questions and contention. Um, if the Senior Centers are functioning healthily as they are, then they can have that responsibility and that extra money, and actually, the way I see it on paper, we could save everyone a mill out of the two mills, one mill could literally be distributed between the Senior Centers by which they fund their own functions and service outside of the city, it doesn't just mean Lincoln is on.
Definitely something to look at.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
We should think about it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, it's just, we should, it's a good discussion and maybe eventually do that, I agree with you.
Yeah, it can maybe.
Now, see, now Sylvan, I don't know what they wanna kinda be on the road over there, don't you, Dan?
We're Senior Center in Lincoln County, just like any other.
I know.
I will make a comment about the shick, uh, when I started on Medicare, I had an individual from Solana drive directly off to see me personally, that's all they came out for, it was free. And there's people around that can come and do the shick, Karen May came out and did ours.
And our central flint hills can find those people for you.
Yeah, I think Kathy Moss is eligible to do that.
She's.
Yeah, I think she, she, she did the class before, she hadn't done it for a while, and what I think Kathy Moss is eligible to do it and stuff, so it's just, and I don't.
Well, I would remind people, I mean, we pay for this building, this is a public building, if someone was uncomfortable going to the Senior Center, you can always meet here in the courthouse, this basement meeting room, or if you talk to the clerk's office, you can find out what available space there is at any given time, if there's some reason that they can't come to the facility, but I find it ironic that we're funding two separate groups that house in the same building who are swapping money back and forth.
One of the comment on the Medicare, one of the greatest things about Medicare is, no matter who provides it at the company, the policy's the same. Now, my wife picked up a book from Elton County Courthouse, it had all the companies that provided the
Coverage for.
Certain plans, and you can just go right down the list and look at the different price ranges, and it varies.
Who had that compiled information?
It was from the Kansas, state Kansas.
It's just a state?
It was a book about, uh, probably thirty pages long, it explained his policy too.
Okay.
And you should be able to go to the health clinics.
And that would go right along with the shick counseling, because that's the breakdown of the information. Okay, well, I know you're here for the funding, and I do think we should disperse the two thousand eighteen, I would not like to do two thousand nineteen, that's the full commission year.
Yeah, I, I, just, I'm, cause like on our budget, we showed our, our accounting, we was eight thousand dollars short.
How much do they want?
It's fourteen-five that we have reserved, and they want the eight-five, which leaves six.
Yeah.
Who would that go to, Sylvan?
Sylvan.
That's what I believe, we should just get rid of the eighteen money between the Senior Centers, then we can deal with.
Cause ours are, with the eighty-five, that'd make us a total of thirty-one-five, and that's.
Because last year, they submitted a budget for thirty-one-five, they only got, what was it?
Fifteen and eight, we got twenty-three.
Two separate dispersments.
And this would be fully funded, your budget from there, and there's six of that.
So did you pull this eighty-five, cause I saw that your budget was something like fifty dollars or something, so did you pull that money from your savings to finish out the rest of the year?
That's where my, my account's lower than it's ever been.
But I'm saying, you, you use personal or private money from the Senior Center to fund?
Well, we, we, we've always had a small balance, I mean, like ten to twelve thousand dollars at the end of the year, so I'm digging way in. So I'm digging way into that now. I'm getting into that now without this eighty-five hundred dollars.
So do you pull out of, and, and it's, you don't have, as a, as a private organization of five oh one C three, you're allowed to have private funds that you get through donations and fundraising, so you don't have to tell me what the dollars are. But I'm just wondering, do you pull out of those funds for anything in particular that you do at the senior centers, separate from the mill levy? Or do you just keep that and you run everything off of the mill levy?
Every, everything that involves, involves the meals comes out of the mill levy.
Okay.
If we do work on the building.
You've used the other funding that you have.
The other funding that we have.
You own the building, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, if we have to do repairs or whatever.
But the ten thousand that you've kept in the checking account, that's been mill levy money? I mean, that's not something that you deposited in there?
No.
It's just been what you had extra left over from past budgets. But I did see that there, that your last year budget was calculated within fifty dollars of what you spent, so I find that very impressive.
Yeah.
Um, I move to disperse the two thousand eighteen withheld mill levy distribution for senior services. In the amounts of eight thousand five hundred to Lincoln Senior Center and six thousand to the Sylvan Senior Center.
I'll say it.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you may take plan on the future of.
Oh, yeah.
Discussions with the Lincoln Council on Aging.
Yeah.
And.
I know, you know, with the hundred dollars that we get right now, they're the ones that came up with that.
And we should maybe discuss it with Becky too, because she's the director of both of them now, her input on this. If it'd be feasible for her and maybe ways to.
You know, you don't want to, maybe it isn't a good idea, I don't know, but we can discuss it anyway.
Well, I think what we need to stress, the, the Council on Aging at this point feels very, um, disheartened because they want to do something, but I have been questioning what it is that they want to do, like today I asked what their plan is for their savings account, they don't have one. Um, I think what needs to be stressed, I told them to look at their Articles of Incorporation, because it specifically says that their job is to go around and find out what the needs are. Then they, as a group of volunteers, come to you and your senior center, come to us and the commission, or come to the other senior center, or even North Central Flint Hills, and they, as a group, say, these are the needs in our county. They don't really need money to do that. If you want to be involved, you just volunteer for the board. And then it says that they're basically a lobbying group, so they, they, they could have some money for postage, I guess, and do surveys and have people mail in their responses, I mean, that would be very appropriate. But for them to have a totally separate functioning agency that is really an employer, they're acting as an employer. And I have a concern with that because we already have people that are able to employ the same people in the same buildings. So.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm going to try to attend their next meeting because I had some questions about that bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda.
Yeah, the director deal, can we deal with that here today?
Yes, the first thing I'd like to do is call for an executive session with the current interim director. Um, and I, I want to basically discuss the details of employment within the department of our current employees and how that relates to what we're going to do about hiring a director. So I only need five minutes. Um, and then we can, and then we can have our public discussion on what we want to determine as far as we need to set the boundaries and the scope of work that needs to be done by that particular position. Because as I explained to you before, in the past, we've had some issues with who's doing billing or who's responsible, or what are the details of that particular job title. So I move to enter recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing the EMS director position and how it relates to current personnel. KSA pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
With?
With the, um, current acting interim director, the commission, and the county clerk to reconvene in the meeting, the basement meeting room at the courthouse.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, talking about the position of ambulance, ambulance director, um, I personally feel like from my experience and what I've seen in the last two years here, is that we definitely need someone to know that their responsibility includes all of the things that have been in prior job descriptions and then we're, we're omitted after that, so I, including the billing. You know, I think that that is something that we really need to say that position is responsible for. We took that out and I think some of the surrounding extenuating circumstances were, oh, well, we're getting a billing service, but, you know, it's not the billing services' job to oversee that, they're basically just doing the, the transactions. So Dawn's office has still, I believe at this point, has still been overseeing that duty. I think that that should become the responsibility of the director of the department. You know, we have other departments where they're solely responsible for their budget. They are watching their own line items, so to speak, within their budget. I'll use LaDonna as an example, 'cause she's a good example. She always comes in here and has down to the cent, literally what the expectation of the expense is versus what they've had for income. And this is one of those departments where you do generate an income. So included in the budget is your expected income. And, and that, I believe, should all fall under the responsibility of the director to oversee. Because if it's not happening or if it's happening improperly, then who do we hold responsible?
Well, I agree with you because they're, they're hands-on dealing with the subject matter of the issue. Like if there's a, you have a, you toss somebody a slide in today, you know what you're doing, you got the paperwork here. When you pawn that off to, up to Dawn's office, they are not, know not, they don't know what's going on with that paperwork like you do. It's just, not that they aren't competent enough to handle it, it's just that, why put in a third party?
Right.
No, I agree with you, Alexis, exactly. That should be handled under that, under that shop. Then you've got control over it, and if there is an issue, you know, you're the ones that's responsible to deal with it. No, I agree.
Similar to your senior citizen situation with the Lincoln County, County Council on Aging, I mean, there's just another hand in the, in the till.
Well, that's exactly what we got with them now. We, we got, we don't know who's doing what with them. I'm not against, they're all good people, you know, nothing personal, there's just.
Yeah.
We, we just got, don't know what's going on, I don't, you know, maybe some people do, but I don't. But anyway, no, with you and the EMS, I agree with you, that should be billing, 'cause I know we had this billing issue. You have it under your shop, your control, then you know what's going on and everybody under you knows what's going on.
So since you're the acting director right now, I'll ask you, do you think that it's, it should be an expectation of the commission that the director position can handle reviewing what's submitted for billing and then also basically being on the receiving end and making sure that that has been deposited as far as funding? Can you watch the funds in your, in your budget and in your account in that way?
Something that would have to happen in order to enable that is we would have to be given access to deposit, to the deposit, the banking and how things work. Because I get what you're saying about it's, we have another party here involved that shouldn't have to be, it should be done within the house because we know what's going on. But at, on the same hand, when those payments come in and they go directly into, 'cause a lot of your Medicare and Medicaid are direct depositing anymore.
Into the.
Into the county's funds.
Yeah.
Which is handled by the treasurer and, and the, yeah.
Then you don't have access to that.
Then the, the director would have to have access to those, that, those documents or those accounts so that he could see then verify that they're going in there in order for that to work properly.
Yeah.
So Dawn necessarily, um, because what's happening right now is Delisa's sending me a Medicare statement. Once I get the Medicare statement and receiving it, and if I'm not balancing, the treasurer's office tells me what Medicare deposits that they received that did not get credited. So like if I haven't given her something, they will tell me, but I don't necessarily need bank access in order to do that.
Okay.
But you can have cor- you have correspondence with the billing company.
Yes, and, and you would get that instead of me.
Yes.
So you're doing that basically all off the remittance advice that you're receiving, okay.
And then I receive it, you know, then I, I take it to the treasurer's office. And then if there's something that's not balancing, so when she gets ready to reconcile her bank account, if it's not, um, balancing, then she'll give me, like this month I had two dollar amounts that she gave me, for example, that I needed to find. And so then I looked at those remittance advices on my own and found them and sent it to Delisa's.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Occasionally they miss, but, um, almost everything is coming from the billing company 'cause they're, they're getting all the remittances, we're not getting any of their amounts.
Well, and even if the treasurer's office could send us, you know, a, a statement of, once a month or something that showed all the income that came in for the county, that would be beneficial to us.
Well, she can send you from the county system.
So on the reverse end of that, going in, are you receiving the information? Well, and, and you're probably doing this, when you collect the information for billing as far as who was on the call, what level they are, what the, you know, what the services were that were provided in order to send that bill out, which Delisa's does, who is gathering that information and giving it to Delisa's?
It's all done through a website, through our.
But are you doing that?
Recordings, and every tech does that. So after the run is marked complete, we, we log on, we do a patient run report with detailed HIPAA type information in it. Delisa's has direct access.
So you input it and they can use it to formulate the bill?
Correct.
But are, are you as the acting director kind of checking in on that and making sure?
I am reviewing the runs as they, they, uh, come in.
Okay, so that's what I think needs to be clear in the job description, is that that person is monitoring the input of the information and then the receipt of the billing funding through the billing service. I mean, that's why we chose to, to hire this billing service, because they're, they're actually making sure that all of the coding is correct and they have correspondence with the insurance companies, which then that saves us that.
And they're up to date on all the ICD-ten training and all the requirements for that position.
So we have an outside outfit doing billing.
It's called Delisa's, yeah, we bid that out, we, we had several quotes.
They're based out of Delphus, Kansas.
Is that good? Do you like?
Yeah, I used, I used Delisa's in, uh, Bennington also, and I, I've always enjoyed.
So that's a good deal.
Very good company, Mitchell County uses them, Minneapolis.
It's seven, is it seven percent? Or four percent?
It's a flat seventy dollars and then I think it's seven percent.
Seven percent of our collections they take.
What do you think, Donna, and since you're involved, would be good, you, would you like to see the billing go back and all that?
I, I think it needs to be, they have more than enough employees to, if, if it's not the director's expertise, then they could find somebody that is.
Point somebody to do that.
And this is gonna sound callous and I, I don't mean verity, but I don't know how to get it out besides that. But people in that department don't necessarily care whether or not bills are collected. And if you take it upon the director who cares and knows that if they collect the funds, they get the money to buy new equipment.
Right, and just like.
They're an employee. Ownership of it.
Right, if you're an employee that puts in what you've done that day and you missed something that you did that can be billed for, that falls back on the director to say, wait a minute, did you da-da-da, because that would typically be a protocol in this scenario, it's not in there to be billed. We're losing out on that, so that should be not your office's job, but their department's job.
And it, it just, it makes them a little bit more accountable and, and take ownership of it and take part in it and, and want their collections to be as low as possible and, I mean, there's always gonna be ambulance runs that they transport on that they're not gonna be able to collect a dime for. But, um, it's just.
Mandatory write-offs through Medicare or whatever.
Yeah, and I don't know how to say that nicely, but I, I, I know that's kind of been issues in the past.
Well, that's the difference between being a department head or being an employee of the department, I mean, you have to take that ownership, that's why you're supposed to be in a position of authority.
And if they don't have control of it.
And I wouldn't disagree with you, historically speaking. Something that we started, uh, we had our staff meeting last Wednesday night, something we started Thursday morning, is we started doing daily QAs, quality assurance on every run that was done the previous day. So like me coming in today on shift, I've got a QA all the, the runs the, that were done yesterday. So like Shiloh and Jerry were on yesterday, so I'll go into the computer and I'll look and make sure that all the, the eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed. And if Shiloh comes in after me or Dale comes in after another tech, the advanced technician on for the day is responsible for going in and QA and a person's report, making sure that they're, that everything's done properly, that the wording's.
It's always better to double check, right, that's a good policy. Um, one of the questions that I had is, you know, is there a more efficient and better way to handle the, uh, schedule? Now, I know if I was an employee that had a twenty-four hour shift and I maybe called out once, you know, maybe not, maybe sometimes you're out, a lot of that shift because it's a situation like that. I understand it's not always the same and you have unexpected circumstances. But if I was an employee on a twenty-four hour shift and I was getting paid my hourly rate for that entire shift and I could work a day and a night, and then later on in the week, a day and a night, and have my full forty hours in, I would be irritated that someone would want to take that away from me. So I understand that. But looking at our county and the size and the percentage of the budget that the EMS is taking, we're actually mimicking what much larger counties do that have much more resources available. Um, the, the, what really shed the light on this is that when we weren't thorough with our billing and we were missing a lot of income this past year, you know, fiscal cycle, we're making up for that strictly with tax dollars. And so other counties, when they do twenty-four hour shifts, they'll do a reduced pay rate for sleep time. You know, if, if I assume that in twenty-four hours, you're gonna get eight hours of sleep or something like that, then that eight hours isn't at the full pay rate. Um, there's also the option of splitting shifts where you don't do the twenty-four hours. You know, if we had a director position that was Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty as we do the other office positions, but they, during that time, they're on call for calls, then you would only need to schedule one person with that director for that eight hours of the day. Then you bring in two more people to take the next shift and so on, and you could do the three, you could do the three-eight hour shift or you could do the eight and then you could do the, what would that be, sixteen? Yeah, sixteen. So I think we need to explore possibilities before we make this hire.
Well, I, I can tell you, because I kinda caught wind of what you were talking about there in a previous commissioners meeting. Um, I figured that up, if I was to take out and go to just forty hours a week and lose that eight hours of overtime every week, based on a twenty-four and a sixteen per week to make it be go down to forty, I figured off of my current rate of pay, that would be about a twelve thousand five hundred dollar a year cut and pay for me, which would cost me my job because I wouldn't be able to live off of that, and I would have to quit and go find a job elsewhere.
But you have two full-time jobs.
But I would still, I, I base that off of that, that income, so I, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to work here for let, that much difference.
Well, and like I said, I prefaced it by saying it's taking something away, because it was given, in my understanding, it was given without any discussion, it was just like, oh, well, we're gonna go to twenty-four hour days, and you get paid your full rate for twenty-four hours. Um, now.
I wasn't here at that.
No, I know, I know, and that's not aimed at anyone, I'm just saying in general, there, there wasn't a lot of forethought there as far as what the expense is going to be.
It was my understanding that the part of the, a large part of the reason they went to twenty-four hour shifts was because of lack of volunteerism, which I experienced in my other full-time position in Bennington. I have a hard time covering my schedule there in Bennington with two techs, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, uh, in a, in a volunteer situation. I struggle with it on a daily basis.
Well, the other thing is, we are not mandated to provide twenty-four hours coverage. So the fact that we have someone, that we're paying two people overnight, every night, and, and I don't know the statistics on how many calls are during the daylight hours versus how many calls are during off hours, et cetera. But we're not, the state doesn't mandate twenty-four hour coverage.
Yes, they do.
So, no.
If you're gonna operate an ambulance service licensed by the Kansas Board of EMS, you have to have technician, two technicians available, twenty-four hours a day, seven days.
Okay, but available doesn't mean that you pay for presence at the EMS department twenty-four hours a day. You know, other departments you have on call, so you may have your forty hours a week and then you have these two evenings or overnights where you're on call. Now, if you get called out, you get paid time to half, 'cause that's your overtime. But, I mean, I know, because I've worked for an. But, I mean, I know because I've worked for an, I mean, I worked for Service Master, which wasn't emergencies for people's bodily functions, it was emergencies for people's homes. So when I had my week of being on-call, I didn't go to work after five, but if I got called after five when I was done, I would go to work and that's my time and a half from the time I get to the office until the time I finish my job and go back to the office. You know, there are ways to provide twenty-four hour service, but we're not mandated to have on, we're not mandated, mandated to pay people to be at our facility twenty-four hours a day.
I get where you're going with that.
Hospital people now, we have some I call, like on the weekends and stuff, like medical technicians and stuff to come in if they get called in to draw blood and stuff. I know people do that now, so you're right on that.
Yeah, and the difference is.
One thing to think about with that though is we are mandated to have a, an average of less than five-minute response time.
Response, what does response mean?
From the time we are paged to the time we are rolling out the door, going ten-eight on the radio en route to the call, we have to do that in an average of less than five minutes.
Which it would be helpful to know when, how many calls we get there at night versus, you know, during the day and how many calls, because I've seen the call records, but it doesn't indicate how many were transferred versus how many were actual emergent on this, you know, on this, uh, at that time, yada, yada. Yeah, I just, I think that some of those things need to be brought to light because, I'm gonna kind of repeat what Randy said, but we're a small county. And to have full pay twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for that department is really, I mean, we have a really large budget now, and we don't do that for our sheriff's department, you know. We have people that get paid to, they, they do their forty, actually, they do forty-three hours before they even get overtime. And then it's scheduled in a rotating way so that it's not a guaranteed eight hours of overtime. We're guaranteeing every single employee in that department eight hours of overtime.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can up their hourly pay rate, but still save money by not doing twenty-four hours of that full pay.
Overtime.
Yeah. And like I said, I mean, I know that's taking something away from them that they have, that they have now. Um, and I know that that department's not gonna be in favor of that, but I'm looking at it from a monetary standpoint. That doesn't get any cheaper for us, that only gets more expensive as we do cost of living raises, as we do merit-based raises, as we do all these things. We're guaranteeing eight hours of overtime times how many employees every week?
Six.
So six times eight, we're guaranteeing forty-eight hours of overtime to that department weekly out of our budget. That's a lot of money.
How many calls do you get on average in a month, just a ballpark figure?
Ballpark figure, thirty.
Thirty calls a month, yep, about one a day almost, the average.
Over the last several years, we've averaged right, for a yearly call volume of right at three hundred and, between three hundred and sixty and three hundred and eighty calls.
Are you sure? Because I thought the last report I got, it came out to be one every two days.
Nope, um, I guarantee it, I can show you the record from the last three years that we were averaging right in that three sixty-five range.
So do you know how many of those are transfers versus actual response to a scene?
Uh, not without looking it up, I would give it to.
Bottom line is you're, you're about once a day, you're averaging, you're lead, you're on a call somewhere. So that means you, we justify, you know, that, that having that going on, obviously, once a day almost. It isn't like you have two a week or something.
I can tell you the majority of our calls are in the evenings.
In the evening, yeah, when people are out at night or something.
Right, they're usually like it's five o'clock, it's shift change at the hospital, let's transfer somebody on to the next hospital. Uh, so they'll call us at five, six o'clock at night to transfer somebody out to Salina or Wichita.
Now, if you're doing a transfer, that's obviously not as serious as a, a nine-one-one, right? Because if the hospital says we need to take some individual to Salina, you probably got an hour or two, or it's probably not a tight schedule necessarily on that.
Not, we don't have an hour or two, usually they'll call us and they'll expect us there within about twenty minutes.
But because you may, they may be planning saying, well, somebody broke their leg and they need help, or I, I don't wanna make anything up like that, but, you know, normally there may be just something that they need to go to Salina for, they're in Lincoln now. And a lot of, if it ain't serious or real critical, you may have, you could get to it all anytime this day, maybe. Whereas obviously nine-one-one, you gotta be there right now, right?
Right.
So is that a different type of, I don't know what I'm saying here. I'm just saying maybe that ain't as serious, so maybe.
It's, it comes down to the question of what percentage of our calls, what did you tell me, they're called transports?
Transfers.
Transfers are, are transfers versus emergency response to the scene of an accident, some sort of emergency situation like that.
Is that billed differently, like if nine-one-one, is that billed as a more serious issue?
We've, we've got the rates of, of.
You gave.
Charge that we, that I, you guys.
Yeah, you gave, we signed up here, uh, based on the service, right, you provide, yeah, okay.
So that would be the different, the different rates we charge, but it could still, it could still be an ALS level one coming from a hospital on a transfer as, as the same as.
Based on the condition of the patient, yeah, right, sure, okay.
So there's no really difference in charge on whether it's a transport or a transfer. Um, the, the, the difference is the patient's condition.
Yeah, but I do agree with Alexis, what she was saying. Uh, I'm like agreeing with her, we're in a small county, three thousand people, thirty-one hundred. And if we can save money anywhere we can and still provide services, that's what I'm for. And that doesn't mean I'm saying let's lay off a bunch of people or cut back a bunch of people, but if we can, because our taxes are all higher, we all know that, and that's, that, that's hurting our county overall. And if we can cut spending or at least tighten this budget a little and, and, and stay within tax dollars, you know, then we can compete with the counties around us. Maybe then we wouldn't spiral down here like losing population. And that's, you know, that's, I think our opinion here, in my opinion.
Well, I'll throw out there, like one of the rotations could be, you know, you have this person who's Monday through Friday with their eight hours as a director, who does all the office work every day, checks everything from the day before, makes sure the people who were on that night shift before had done their job at night, et cetera, et cetera. Then you have that consistency throughout the week. You're not just leaving every two days up to a different crew. But, you know, you could have that sixteen and sixteen-hour shift where then you get your thirty-two hours. And then if you're that person, you take a day shift of eight hours, so you're working three different times during the week to get your forty hours. And with only six people, we may very well need that, um, that overtime to be there and available as well. But it might not be to the extent of us paying out forty-eight hours of overtime a week versus, even if we paid out forty hours of overtime a week, that's less than forty-eight is what I'm getting at. You could increase the hourly pay for each employee, so they're losing out on their hour time, hours, but their, their, their af, their actual income as far as what they're getting paid per hour could be greater, but they're not necessarily guaranteed eight hours every week.
Of overtime, yeah.
Right.
Which is less expensive.
For us, yeah, I mean, we've kind of gotten ourselves into a pinch there by saying that every time there's an increase in wages, we're increasing that almost exponentially because that forty-eight hours of overtime doesn't go away. It's not just because something happened that we paid that, it's just budgeted right in. You know, we're not doing that for the, the sheriff's department and they're potentially going out with their life, their own life being threatened.
Well, don't think our life's not in, in jeopardy at points within a call too.
Yeah, we know.
Not, maybe not as much as what the sheriff's office is, uh, but they also have.
But you go out, mean, like conditions like when it's ten below zero and a blizzard out here and they have to go down to rescue, so yeah, you're putting yourself in danger.
Right.
We know.
I'm not diminishing the importance of the department, you know, but we have a very, the percentage of our budget that's going out to provide that services, it, that service is very similar to the percentage that is put out by much larger counties. And it kind of reflects in dollars where we haven't made any efforts to reduce that. You know, it's, it's been an expansion that happened ba- basically overnight with the twenty-four hour shift ordeal, which, how many years has that been done, four or five?
Uh.
I think it was maybe five years, I, because I've been in for two.
Probably, I know it was in August.
I, I heard you say something a little bit ago about being, staying competitive with, with other surrounding counties. Right now, I feel Lincoln is competitive with other surrounding counties in what they pay, uh, and to.
The pay rate?
And what they pay as a pay rate and to make.
Hourly?
Yes.
Does Bennington do a guaranteed eight hours of overtime for every employee?
We're, we're a volunteer, I am the only full-time employee in Bennington.
So they're all volunteers?
We, we run a hundred and eighty calls a year and, uh, we just.
So then.
We can't justify the hundred and eighty to have full-time staff, but I'm looking at, um, over there, I'm trying to write a safer grant to provide for full-time employees and utilize volunteers overnights and on Sundays.
So when you get called in at Bennington as a volunteer, then what kind of pay rate are you getting per hour? Is that, is, does that compensate?
Right now, they're getting two bucks an hour.
Similar, on, when they're on this call?
On call, they're getting two bucks an hour.
Okay, but when they, when they respond, when they're.
Twenty-five dollars per run.
They're getting a flat rate to do their job and they don't get an hourly pay when it happens?
Nope.
Is that just?
That's a volunteer service, that's why volunteerism is dying.
Right.
I've got.
It almost doesn't justify your, your.
I've got twenty-eight people on the roster in Bennington and I have a hard time covering the roster.
Well, yeah, why would you wanna go out there when you're not getting paid for it?
For twenty-five dollars.
And that's what I'm afraid you're gonna get into in this situation. If you start taking overtime away from the people and say on average that, that employee loses twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year, they're gonna go look for employment elsewhere because they can't live off of what, uh, that, that pay cut. So then you're gonna be going back to counting on volunteers to do that. And if you look at our volunteer roster currently, we've got twenty-two people on the roster, twelve of which are either full-time, or six are full-time, six are part-time, and ten are volunteers. And, and I can tell you right now, when we get a page to Sylvan, and nothing against the Sylvan guys, I appreciate everything that they do, but when we get a page to Sylvan, if I'm on shift in Lincoln, I head straight to the truck because the likelihood that they're gonna have somebody available to answer that call is not great. So we get in the truck and that, as soon as that dispatcher says, Lincoln, we need you to respond, we're heading out the door. So to me, I think you're, by trying to do this, you're taking a step backwards. Um, if you look at Mitchell County, for an example, they run about six hundred to six hundred and fifty calls a year, which is almost twice what, what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, and they've got two full-time crews on, they've got four full-time people on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and they operate off the same schedule that we do. Uh, plus they have a separate director and a separate assistant director that don't work the truck.
Well, see, that goes back to the point that I was making, so Mitchell County, I believe.
They have a lot more money there.
Well, I think they're about.
And they're about sixty-five hundred population.
Right, worth, for example.
But the big difference between Mitchell County and Lincoln County is, uh, they have more tax dollars coming in because of, um.
Higher tax base.
Businesses and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, more, yeah, well, they have the college here in Secasi.
Right.
I mean, the, uh, Fort.
Sunflower and.
Yeah, Carrico, and yeah, they got business. We, we are all, the income primarily is for pri- uh, property tax, they're having registration.
One benefit we do have over them is, is the windmills, and I realize you guys have a fund for that, which is, I'm just trying to think of different, you know, we got some pipelines that come through that you collect tax dollars off of.
Well, that's a whole third of our tax base right there.
But a lot of that is, like the windmill stuff, that gets depleted, those contracts run out, then we're getting less and less here a few years. That's not forever, that money coming in.
Right, yeah, that has a time.
I think Lincoln's in a good place right now with the way that they run their schedule. And that's why I was interested in, in the job myself, um, because I feel that you're in a good place and that's where I'm trying to get Bennington to is what the situation.
Now, Bennington, is that funded by the city or by the Ottawa County?
Um, it's funded through a mill levy through Ottawa County.
Ottawa County.
We're a little bit different animal in Ottawa County because we have two ambulance services.
Minneapolis.
Minneapolis and Bennington.
We have two major cities.
Right.
Yeah, they can really, Sylvan's not as big as they are, I guess.
Um, but I, I think.
Okay, I'm gonna change directions a little bit, we were talking about a review panel. I reached out to, um, the, uh, director of nursing at the hospital. And Krista, Krista, do you say Hayes?
Hayes, Hayes.
Hayes, okay, it was true, it was Ha- Haas. So I reached out to her, she said she would be willing, and I did kind of give that tentative date that we would like to try to schedule sometime in that last week of March.
All right.
Um.
Will you interview people?
Dawn, did you happen to check the locations of the ads where they exist or, or?
Where they have, uh, Kemsus, Kemsas, Salina Journal, but, um, we can sit in all the Lucas Publishing, it's on the HR partners and it was on Next Tech.
Okay.
Um, we listed it on Indeed and for Monster, it's two hundred and forty-nine dollars a month to list one job, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to list up to three jobs.
Wow, I didn't realize it was that expensive.
So we didn't do that one.
Okay.
And am I correct, the applications have closed on the twenty? Or are we still accepting applications?
Were we gonna extend that?
We did, I believe we did, or did we only do that for help for the human resources?
You didn't really make a motion, but I'm not really sure that.
Okay, I thought maybe we extended that Thursday, when I called.
We did talk about extending.
But you never made a motion.
No, I didn't, but we talked about, I thought we talked about extending it for both.
Do you think we should, or?
Well, we, since we have through the la- you know, the last week in March is when we were tentatively going to, so that gives us, you know, three full weeks. But our two weeks in the Salina Journal is up, we only, I mean, we're not still in the newspaper.
No, and the H R to advertise it was gonna be more than it was for the ambulance director. It had more lines, we did tell the interns to tell them to run it.
For the Sentinel?
No, for the Salina Journal.
Oh, yeah.
I wasn't sure where to cut it, so. I can't.
What are we do, are we doing advertising costs out of these departments?
Yes.
Okay, contractual, is that a contractual expense, okay. Um, I think we should at least continue it through this week and next week and we can close it off on the fifteenth.
Advertising?
Yes.
What, uh, slide paper, what do you?
I think we should run everything one more time.
Everything, that's fine, you need a motion or?
Yes, yes. And I think we should, while we're on it, we should just do it for both, both jobs, both openings.
Can I make a suggestion that might save you some money?
Sure.
Um, I, if you're looking for somebody to run an ambulance department, your average person that works EMS is not gonna read the Salina Journal looking for a job.
Yeah.
Um, however, I got ahold of Dawn here a couple of weeks ago and told her that I found an advertisement on Kemsas, but it was not advertised on the Kansas Board of EMS. That is also free advertising. I would, if, just a suggestion, you do what you want, but I, you would get more response from advertising it on the Kansas Board of EMS website than you would from the Salina Journal. You'd save yourself the two hundred and some dollars to advertise in the Salina Journal and it would be go out statewide on the Kansas Board of EMS.
Sure, that's a good suggestion.
She didn't have it out in that one.
It was not, and I called Hannah that day after I left the commissioners meeting when we talked about that last, and I told him, I says, well, please let Dawn know it's on Kansas, but it was not on the.
I heard he wouldn't read it anymore, you know, hardly even got it to drivers.
Yes, what's going on up here.
Yeah, we wanted to cancel it up.
Looking, who else?
It's a very good potential she did.
Oh, I know what I was supposed to do. The other thing I was going to do is reach out to find a, another director who may be interested in sitting on the panel. And I have not done yet that, I've done that yet, so I will do that. That was the other thing I was supposed to do, so I got verification, confirmation.
Krista Hayes.
Yes, from our own hospital, uh, head of nursing. I will, that's, that's the other thing I'm gonna make myself a note that I was going to do.
And leave the other ads, should we add to add, granted what I was saying about the Kems, what'd you say?
Uh, on the Kansas Board of EMS website.
Kansas Board of EMS?
Yeah, I would just basically copy your ad.
Should we do an ad to them?
Yep.
I agree with that, Dawn, is that okay?
Yeah.
Still do, still do.
So then what I would suggest, so on the eighteenth, at that time, on the eighteenth, the applications that we do have, we need to make a selection for those that we'll call that week and ask them to come the following week for an interview.
That's what I mean.
Does that make sense?
We don't need a motion to that, do we just?
No. Do you, do you want a motion for continuation of the ads? Or I think it's just approval of.
Verbal.
So you're looking at doing, uh, the.
So you wanna review.
We're looking at, yes, I think on the eighteenth, in an executive session, we need to look at the paper. I'll just.
The application.
Yeah, I'll just suggestion was we look at the applications on paper, determine which ones we want to interview. Then we bring in these extra two people.
The week later.
For the panel that can do the interview sometime that.
Who's gonna, on this panel, is that gonna be us with the panel?
It's just us and two, two additional people.
Fine, yeah.
So we have one and now I need to find a second one.
Right, okay.
I would request that you not contact Mitchell County because I was terminated from there, uh, because I didn't agree with some of their policies and I'm kind of a local person and I'll tell you what I think.
Well, that'd hear a fire. Well, that year fired.
But if you're looking for an EMS director, I would appreciate it not being Mitchell County's EMS director.
Is Brett King still employed with Mitchell County?
Yes, he is. So you're looking at, are you planning to do that at the end of March during a commissioners meeting, so like the twenty fifth?
Not necessarily, I think we need to try to accommodate.
I'm just trying to look at my schedule cuz I do have a very busy schedule.
Yeah, I I don't think we necessarily need to do it during the commissioners meeting, we have enough to do on a regular agenda. I think we need to try to accommodate working people and do it later in the afternoon, I'm sorry, Dawn, if that. Keeps you late a day, but I think.
That be considered a commissioner meeting and?
It would be.
An executive session?
We would have to announce it as a special meeting.
Yeah, and then uh.
And then we would just go into executive session to conduct the interview.
Full time executive session with each uh candidate, okay.
Well, if you if you find out what day you would like to do it, I would appreciate notice as as soon as possible. Just so I don't schedule myself in Bennington and I'm not, that way I'm not available.
Well, I'll tell you what, we have to do the end of the month meeting on the twenty ninth, which would be that Friday. So we could do an afternoon end of the month.
That was the day that I had asked you guys can do that up to that Thursday.
So then the twenty eighth, okay, so let's shoot for that day, it'll be the twenty eighth.
Twenty ninth or eight?
Twenty eighth.
Okay.
And we are typically be on the twenty eighth, but we're moving it up a day, so it'll be the twenty eighth is.
Actually, it's perfect for me cuz I'm going out of town.
I think we should meet, do that, and we don't have to do it in the morning, we can just meet in the afternoon.
Okay.
Do that portion of our meeting and then schedule or.
Yeah, they were already here.
For like a half hour.
Do it all at one time.
Yeah. Okay, that's what we'll plan on.
And I'll get back with you on Wendy's full time cuz I I'm not hiding it.
It was prior, I know it was prior to me starting, I've been here just uh three plus three and a half years.
See, I I think it was prior to twenty fifteen or right around twenty fifteen, it was before twenty sixteen. Wendy was here and there was a death, somebody died. And our ambulance attendants, they couldn't find anybody to cover, they wanted to go to somebody's funeral, maybe somebody in Mitchell County or something in Elsworth County ended up covering some of our shifts. And not charging us anything.
So out of curiosity, how does that work with mutual aid with other counties, I mean, if we have other counties that are paying twenty four hour shifts? Like you said, Mitchell County always has two crews on overnight. So do you, can can we sign a mutual aid agreement that they cover specific. Overnight shifts for us, that they be, you know?
Not, probably not without some kind of reimbursement.
Oh, no, 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 I understand that, I understand that.
Plus then you're increasing the response times exponentially, I mean, if you have a call in Sylvan. Uh at three o'clock in the morning and they're covering during that time, you're looking at a forty five minute response time from Boy.
They'd have to drive from Boy.
I know, but I think every county that borders us has a twenty four hour service, we have Senee County over here, we have Mitchell County, I don't care about Ottawa. If they have twenty four, is that twenty four?
Uh Minneapolis will be covered on the Tuscan area, no, they're not twenty four seven.
And then we have Russell County over there.
Minneapolis has um four full time employees, they do a seven to three. And then a three to eleven and then they count on volunteers to cover the night shifts and.
Eleven to seven.
And the weekends, yeah. But they have a hard time keeping employees.
Okay, moving on to Human Resource Officer Job Description.
So I made copies for you guys of what I think is the last one, um I did add. Oh, this one does say revised six twenty one, I didn't pop up on mine. So I think this was the last revision.
Okay.
And yeah, you guys can, I don't know what you wanna do, I mean, if you wanna tear it apart now or take it.
I think there are a few things I wanted to go over for sure. Okay, so I Dawn and I had met um. One time here in the courthouse and I just took a picture, well, we took down his notes, but. I think we need to detail what the daily, weekly, monthly and annual. Duties are, yes, because I I feel like with it being a new position, we have to have this specifically outlined and. By asking someone to just come in and create it themselves, I think we're putting our, we're putting ourselves in a in a corner. I don't think I had any problem with what we said as far as experience. Employee should possess three to five years' experience with payroll administration and benefit management, employees are expected to acquire necessary information and skills to perform the job. Well, within six months, um high school diploma, GED, required post-secondary education preferred. Uh should have knowledge of federal and state employment regulations, FLSA, ADA, ADA, FMLA, et cetera. Ability to deal with difficult individuals in a polite and professional manner in difficult situations. Knowledge of computers, computer software, printers, um. Here's where we have a little bit of a problem, I think we can find someone who's familiar with software, but every software program is different. And because we plan on using Comtech into the future.
Nobody's gonna have that experience unless they come from within our county, so.
Exactly.
And I think that's why it's always generalized cuz normally if you have some kind of computer skills, you can be taught, yeah.
You have software, well, a lot of that software is complex now, which you may need assistance to install new stuff from uh your vendor. You buy it from, like you do probably up here, you got somebody, your county clerk's software, right? But then you learn it and they train you, they train you on new changes and they do upgrades to software, do they go through with you, what's going on?
Yes, and they probably would do some more training, um we've always just taken care of training in-house. But I can tell you this, if ever I would bail on you guys, you could always call our software vendor and they'll come out. And actually physically help you, they're not from the state, but um they have done that to other counties, they've helped them.
That would include uh HR software too, of course, you're doing all HR now anyway, so that would.
All all of our software is with one vendor.
You you like them or they've been good to you, good pe- good coordination to you, good, well, that's good. Cuz sometimes they're not good, uh you know, good helpers on. User user training guides and stuff and uh you know, that's not good.
I will say they do not have any user guides, that's the downfall of the software.
Yeah, that's.
Um but it's partly because they don't want to take more money, the money that that we're, they don't wanna increase our fees. To do manuals.
Right.
And if they do that, then they would have to increase our fees and so. A lot of times, you know, a good resource and we always make jokes about Riley County. But Riley County is their biggest county as far as um software, using software. So they tend to make custom programs or use them as they're getting fixed, they also have a payroll department, this could be a potential place where. You know, if the person is struggling, then we send them to another county, maybe they could teach them a bit better, does that make sense? Cuz sometimes it's not necessarily what you're learning, it's who you're learning it from.
Well, sure, and software is complex and and specific and detailed. That's and that's too bad, you don't have like a user's guide or a training guide for.
No, I can tell you what we have, we have the old one from when it was CIC before split, yeah, but it's not updated.
Because if a new person comes in, that is not a user's guide, it's tough to order the software. Cuz without you, like, say you get a new employee, you gotta almost hold their hand and show them how to run it.
Well, we have manuals that we do and that's what we asked, yeah, that's what we asked.
Cheat sheets of uh what to do and how to do it, yeah. Well, that's just it, we need because uh we want the HR person to be able to. Be able to do, everything's on a computer nowadays, you know, so you gotta know how to operate it and then be able to adapt to changes.
Okay, I had a suggestion under attendance. Employees must be at their job performing essential duties on a regular and counting and continuing basis with no excessive absences. And then I think we should say and comply with employee handbook and policies. Um that kind of takes care of some of the issues that we are gonna talk about as far as what's in there for comp time. We need to establish that policy that is eight thirty or excuse me, eight to four thirty. Um that's not in the handbook, right, so that we could just put that in the handbook.
I'll have to look.
I think that's why we were discussing it, okay.
For some reason, I think it is in the handbook.
Oh, I you say that. I I went through that thoroughly one time and I haven't done that again, I need to do that.
I can't say I have read it since twenty twelve, I mean, I read a section if somebody asks, does this apply? I can, yeah. I was supposed to have read it last year when we were working on that department heads, but.
Have you got any applicants for this, yeah, enjoy?
There are, but I can't tell you, I've counted them, Hannah's been printing them off and setting them on the desk, there's been a couple that I've talked to.
How many?
I'd say five or six.
Oh, really, that many, okay, good.
That's just my guesstimate, though.
Yeah, I was cu- I was curious if you had anybody or whatever.
Okay, I think pretty much everything on here is what we discussed with some of the issues, except since we have a second page here. With marginal functions, maybe we should just add a section to this particular job description. That itemizes the duties, so under daily, we have emergency changes as the primary concern. So employee deductions, court orders, motor vehicle, property tax. And the form, the providing necessary forms for that scenario. And that would be something that should be checked on and or um taken care of immediately on a daily basis. Drug testing, checking position, oh, because you said someone might call in about a drug test. And they would have to have the knowledge as to whether or not that's even applicable to the position, so that may happen on a daily basis. And then quarterly uh quarterly testing and checking the schedule for that rotating testing for those certain departments. They need to stay up to date on that schedule and where we are with employee files. Uh filing needs to be done daily so that if you or someone else needs to pull a file, it's where it's supposed to be. Advertisements is daily, FMLA is daily, checking com- uh checking time calculations for that. And then handbook forms, they need to be able to immediately produce the form. Pertaining to the issue that the employee may need regarding the policy in the handbook.
Do they do taxes, like employees uh department taxes, like nine four ones and then quarterly reports and all that? And then uh who deals with our income tax, I know our county's government.
We don't have to file.
We don't have to file any of that, but don't you have to have some reports, uh in- income expense sheets to the government and the federal government or state or nothing, huh? We don't have any of that, huh, okay.
Uh the only thing that we have right now is for the um building, public building commission. And you guys hire that one attorney to do all those regulatory reportings for it.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a separate payment for that?
Yes, if you remember, you guys approved that when you paid.
When we did the.
Yeah, the insurance, the whole year. I wanna say it was like eighteen hundred or something.
Okay, yeah, it was the, yeah, we did the minutes for the whole year and everything, okay, weekly, we just have time cards. So to collect time cards and to check math. And payroll reports, so.
You got that on there, don't you, right?
Well, I guess that I'm just trying to.
We go over review some more stuff?
Well, to give this person a description of what needs to be done daily versus what needs to be done monthly. There's not much under the weekly, um monthly, check the drug testing schedule with that woman and the FLSA is under monthly. And then annually, we have job descriptions, handbook revision, assess health insurance. Which so much for our, us getting a broker, we need to.
Yeah, I was gonna contact Elsworth County, I was thinking about this this weekend, so Shelley had told me. Why I think her name is Shelley, oh my god, I'm drawing a blank, but um she was telling me that they went out and had. Their insurance bid last month, cuz I sat by her at the annual meeting, so Elsworth County, so I'll visit with them and see.
Did they already get their bids?
I think so, I think they had gone.
She say they were glad they did it, did it seem? Had they been at the state?
She just said, yeah, she had been with the state, she was at the state meeting, but I think that they were looking at doing something different. I think that her only biggest concern was, if I remember right with her, I have conversations with a lot of clerks, so. Uh but I think with her, there was a concern because one of the commissioners was friends with one of the people that bid. And she didn't necessarily think that was the best option and she was afraid that's where they were gonna go at. Which I will tell you, we had BMI, um which was, I I don't know what they call them, but we used to have Blue Cross Blue Shield. Where we had a stop loss, where you paid the first so many thousand of everybody's claims till they wanted it to go really high. And the commissioners decided they don't wanna take the risk. So then we went with a place out of Great Bend that was called BMI, which was basically managed services. So you had, if you went to the doctor, they sent this bill to this place, they did it and they sent us a bill of what they owed us. Um a lot of the employees didn't like that because their claims weren't getting paid, um there was just issues. So then we went back to Blue Cross Blue Shield because Blue Cross Blue Shield undercut them when we rebid the process. And then the price just astronomically grew to where the state's health insurance was the best plan for us. So the only thing that I can say is I would like to not go with a managed care provider if at all possible. Maybe things have changed, but.
Look at HMO.
Um it's kind of basically like that, but very few doctors accept the insurance and so. It just, it makes it harder on the employees, but.
Ottawa County uses a deal called Corporate Plan Management, which is basically a self-funded insurance and that was horrible insurance.
I would like to add under marginal functions, it says participates in training and educational sessions as required. So we haven't really put out a requirement to do that, I think that's where we failed as a commission also trying to initiate this process. So we need to stay on top of that for the next person, but also I think they, that person, the HR person should be responsible for suggesting, suggests. Training for departments because they may have access through human resource, resources to suggest different. Events to attend or even training sessions that may not be directly provided by those types of departments. I mean, it might not be a bad idea to have department heads attend a skills seminar about management. That's not necessarily in their field of operation, if you know what I'm saying, and that person could find those and suggest, that skill path is just one that comes to mind. Cuz we always get advertisements for it, but I've been to one of their seminars and they're fairly good, I mean, we can benefit from that and this person could be. Facilitating that information and and suggesting it to different departments.
Well, in KC offers some um, I wanna say it's called a leadership program, but I went to it as a regular employee. Doris sent me to it, uh and I wanna say Tammy Mae went through it too, I haven't had the opportunity really to send my girls. Or, well, now my one gal, but there are, there are things, what I had told Dee that I kinda had hoped that maybe she would do. Is have some training things available and ready to go, so if the highway department did have a rainy day and said, I have twenty employees in my shop and.
Come do this webinar.
Yeah, and so, you know, I I think there's avenues out there, we used to have. Okay, don't stand on chair set training session, they had a video and we had a TV with a VCR, you pop the video in and you played it. We're not very good about that, we can save some money with work comp if we would get into that training mode, I just. Don't have the time to make it happen.
Skill pack was like a hundred dollars and it was an all day deal, I mean, that you break for lunch, but you get hours of. You know, some, it was in management training, but that's, I mean, we could use that for department heads, you can use other skill set oriented training for employees. I mean, organizational things where people may need to show some better organizational skills. And it really should be based on their evaluation, which that was the last thing I didn't finish, under annual was evaluation planning. That needs to be planned a year prior for the following year, when those will be due and then in what order the departments would be reviewed or something. To that effect, that's all I have for the notes that we took, as far as the timing of, everything's in here in the job description.
And you have for annual, what, the W twos and all that into your tax stuff, right? Cuz that was, that was a. Because that was, that was a, you ran into that here at the end of this last year, you got it inundated with a tremendous amount of work there, right?
So, we have in the, in there that it says that they report directly to the commission, but I think what Aljo was getting at one time that I agree with is that you still, as the clerk who approves accounts payable and checks, you know, for payroll and things like that, I think you do have some sort of responsibility there. Not that I want you to have follow-up responsibility so that you're constantly double-checking, just so that we put something in there about, um.
Oversight.
Yeah, any payroll, I think it's particularly payroll, not necessarily employee relations, but let's, let's call it payroll and employee relations, those are the two major factors in this job. I think any payroll duties, um, may be subject to approval of the county clerk. Does that sound?
Or you'd have oversight with, until we, well, know you have a really competent person at HR, then maybe you wouldn't have to do that anymore, but you know, you don't want to run into this problem we had before.
If that's just stated in there, I think then that gives you legitimacy to say, I have found this about payroll and you need to be doing it that way. Uh, and then, you know, they're subject to your approval for that process.
Well, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but the annual reports in, or, in the quarterly reports, actually, the annual reports you do online now, but the quarterly reports that you do, somebody has to sign off on them. And I sign off as the representative.
So, can you add that?
So, yeah, I'm assuming that I would still continue that.
I would.
Are you put including, so payroll assignments, or however that was worded, would be subject to the approval of the clerk, as well as quarterly reports?
Yeah, and you should maybe still sign off on them as a official representative of the county, because you're an elected official there.
And she's here daily to oversee all that, and well, the commission can't really have control over that, and we change more often than that position, your position. Okay, that's all I really had.
Okay.
And, and the people that have come in, do they get this when they come to accept their application? So, the only people that may not have this would be with online applicants. So, we need to furnish these for our, uh, interviews.
Yes, and on that indeed side, um, what Hannah, because I just asked Hannah on Friday if she had time to, she could come up with it. So, she built the ad immediately, got a reply back, and, and asked for a meeting, could take thirty minutes or less, so she met with a lady. And, so Hannah was like, how do they apply? Because it says apply now, and like Hannah went ahead and submitted an application. To see what I do, and it just sent her name. And she said, what we do is it just sends you an information, and then at that point in time, the employer then mails the people the application or emails them the application.
Oh, so we have to respond to them through that site?
Well, we, it basically sends you a, their information, yeah.
So, have we had to do that yet?
Um, no.
Can you guys handle that in your office for now?
Yeah, so that was kind of a unique thing, but, um, so I'm assuming that, like, once we would get somebody to apply, that we would send the job description.
It's kind of like a Craigslist, like you can talk to someone through Craigslist, they contact them, and then you give them a response back through that email or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do, so we decided that we would continue running ads for HR. Are we going to do them again through the paper, just the local papers?
I think we probably should.
Yeah, how about at least one more week?
Um.
What is this week or next week, but this week would be better. What did she say tomorrow is to apply? Is that what she told us in the email about the, we wanted to do the publication about the.
Yes, yes.
Did you send her just a request to publish the ad one more time this week?
Yeah.
But with the post papers?
Hold on, I hear a minute, huh? Somebody up there with a hammer? Water hammer?
It seems like a pressure issue to me, but I'm not professional.
Well, apparently, the radiator that was up in the floor or the storage room that I may have said, oh, we'll deal with that when the time comes, may have sprung a leak. So.
Up in the third floor?
Yeah, in the storage room.
Was it leaking down through the ceiling?
Um, I don't, I don't know, I didn't get that much detail. Because I may have slipped it off and may have said to myself, it's not my problem, I don't have time to deal with this right now.
Okay, so let's move on on that subject, because we were talking this morning, um, I ran into John Paul, and so we were talking about how we would need to establish hours, who gets comp time, and how to determine that. I think in the particular position of janitorial, um, what do we call in that position? Maintenance?
Maintenance.
Janitor slash maintenance.
So, in that particular position, we know we just have one person there, I think they should be able to reschedule themselves as necessary according to the weather and according to, you know.
Because he was here three in the morning because that's our heater's leaking over there, and, uh, he was, came in on weekend, last weekend with snow blower out front cleaning the sidewalks, so they gotta be able to, uh, come as needed, yeah.
Right, but I think on a weekly basis, they need to turn in their time card with a note describing just to the HR person, just so that it's verified. I mean, there has to be a little bit of accountability.
Maybe they should have like a status report, like if I had to come in Friday or Saturday because, uh, the plumbing went bad, yeah.
Right, if you see that I clock in at seven PM to nine PM on a Wednesday, and then I come in two hours late on a Thursday, there should be a description as to what it was for, not just that it did it, but because the boiler room was leaking.
Right, I agree, have a status.
And then you don't have a question as to, is this person just leaving early so they can, or staying late so they can come in early? Or, I'm saying backwards, but you know what I mean. Especially for that position, I think, um, the, the policy's clear in the handbook about comp time, the way I read it. You don't get comp time, I mean, especially all these office positions, there's no need for it. Um, now, you guys, what do you, do you get paid extra for election, or do you do comp time for, in your department?
No, that's the only overtime that is approved in our offices, overtime.
Well, and that's up to you because you're an elected official, but just to use that as a, as a basic baseline.
And also, we was talking about maintenance care person, also the highway department gotta have people out here on the weekends when the blizzard's out with the snow crew and stuff, so they should probably have some flexibility too.
But how are they determining whether it's comp time or overtime?
Oh, I don't know.
I would like to know that.
I don't know.
Well. Can, can I tell you what my struggle is?
Yeah, okay, tell us.
So, it's not consistent. And I think they want to do it as each employee wants to do it, and I, I think that's where it needs to be. It's either all overtime and we're paying you, or it's not. So, for example, I got an email that said, employee A wants to take off on the twenty-seventh at three, or at noon, and take three and a half hours off. The twenty-seventh is a new pay period. I don't really care what employee A is doing. I know what she was getting at, what she was getting at was he wanted to reduce his amount that we were gonna pay him, because they didn't get overtime on that Sunday. It's only regular time, it doesn't occur until after they've worked the forty hours. So, their overtime won't occur.
Weekend or evening, until you get to forty, you're not overtime.
Right, so she wanted me to reduce that employee's time for the Friday, or the Sunday work, and I just said, no, I'm not crossing pay periods. If we're gonna pay employees, we're gonna pay all of the employees. You've already submitted the time, I don't care really what happens if he takes off, then I won't make him take leave time for whatever he takes off on the twenty-seventh, but he just needs to know he's getting more paid this month, and he'll get less next month. But as long as he meets the forty hours for the week, I don't really care. But that's where it's, it's a struggle, because then it's like, which employees did you do, which employees didn't you do?
And then that's more work to recalculate their time cards, because if someone's requesting overtime for this, but in that same week, that same snowstorm ended up being comp time for a different person, I mean, that's.
It's just, it's a nightmare.
That's calculating each individual's.
Well, do you have any suggestions? Do you have any suggestions for a policy we're allowed to do?
I just think we need to pay them if they work it, but that's the easiest side. I, I get it where you have some employees that struggle with leave time, so it gives them an opportunity. This is my thing, you guys don't offer overtime very often, so I will give the employees kudos for this, because they have it back asswards in my sense. You don't offer employees overtime, period. So, I would be working every ounce of overtime you possibly could offer, so the last thing I would do is take off this, this past week, like they did. But instead, you have employees that the minute they work three hours, well, by god, tomorrow I want three hours off, which I, I commend them for that because I would not be that way. For me, it would be, this is an opportunity for me to get overtime. But, so, I, I don't know, I don't know where the balance is, and maybe I'm wrong for being, being that way.
Yeah, David?
But again, on a salaried courthouse position, uh, again, salaried being the key word here, anything worked over forty, it, it doesn't count, it doesn't equate, it doesn't anything. Salaryed position is eight hours a day, doesn't regard us, eight is eight, is eight. It doesn't matter if it's noon to midnight, noon to, it doesn't matter. If I get my eight, it doesn't matter what the set time is. When, when I applied for the position of, of emergency management, there wasn't a set, set in the job description, and, and even in the updated job description, there is no Monday through Friday, eight to five. Uh, again, I have county commissioner meetings, I have city council meetings, I have cert meetings, I have a cert meeting this evening, coming up on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. I have training going on down in Crisis City for the state IMT team. Training that day is from eight AM to eight PM, it's a twelve-hour shift. As when you respond as an incident management team person, you're working a twelve-hour shift. So, again, if I have to be down there by eight in the morning, I have to leave here by hour and fifteen minutes south of, south of, southeast alignment to get to Crisis City, hour and a half? So, so again, there is no, a- and again, whether it's urgent, storm spotter season's coming up. Uh, whether, whether I storm spot from my house or whether I come in here, do I have to have somebody's blessing to say, hey, I'm going into the courthouse today to storm spot?
Yes, you do.
Because, because what?
Because you're a department and a function of the county, and we have to have management over how that's going to be performed. You're not the only one-person show for departments, and if every one-person show is going to be rogue on their own timeframe, because they can justify it however they want, training or not.
But again, to my first meetings, or, uh, city council meetings, cert meetings, again, I have a cert meeting this evening too.
Are you on the agenda at the city council meeting?
Not, not this week, no, not any time, but, but when I have been. I've approached each of the city councils within our, within our jurisdiction about storm sirens. Uh, again, and, and with that, I got a letter of intent from the state that said, you need to break that down. So, now, as, as storm spotter season is coming upon us, again, and, and the Post Rock Community Foundation and the Hewlett Foundation rant cycles are opening up again March one through May one, or whatever those deadlines are, but those are open again, and those are co-funding sources that I'm utilizing. So, again, when I go back to the city councils and say, well, gee, I'm gonna do hunters first, I'm gonna have to do each one of those city councils, uh, again, and, and do I have, know how long I'm gonna be on the agenda for? Or again, if I have training out in western part of the county, do I have to come to the courthouse as my point of, of work before I go to Hays for training that I have coming up on the fourteenth? The training at Hays starts at eight o'clock in the morning. So, it'd be a waste of my time as well as the county's to, if I came here to go head west to train.
Well, aren't you also clocking in at home before you come to the courthouse for a day's work?
Am I, am I clocking in? A- as far as.
As far as when you have a normal day's work that you're performing at the courthouse, not, not just traveling somewhere?
Yes, I do. Yes.
So, then your argument is moot, because what you're saying is it justifies your time to leave from home on a traveling trip where you're getting paid for work hours, but you're also taking that advantage to yourself by ch- clocking in at home before you actually come to the courthouse for a regular day where you don't have intention of traveling.
But again, too, my, my, my vehicle, under my understanding, was a, a first responder vehicle. Has a light, has sirens, and it has county, county markings on it that it's emergency management.
But are you responding to an emergency at, at eight o'clock in the morning when you're clocking in before you get to the courthouse?
No.
That's the problem, that vehicle does not qualify. That is why, that's why I brought it to them, that vehicle does not qualify per those definitions in the IRS guidelines.
Okay.
We have the IRS come out and audit us, we can welcome that.
Okay, and again, I received that same information from Celine County Emergency Manager and Russell at Ellsworth County, which is the same person, they do the same thing. We had training the other day when I turned my timesheet into you, we had training up in, up in Osborne. We have North Central Kansas Emergency Management Association meeting, and at that meeting, I asked the two different emergency managers, two of them, that, that I know have time in, and, and they said, no, when, when I leave my place, I'm on the clock. And again.
Are you referring to responding to an event? Or are you referring to coming to do your paperwork at your desk?
Every county that replied to me said that either A, the vehicle is provided at the courthouse and the emergency manager comes to the, to the courthouse, gets the vehicle in response to wherever, or B, they are charging it as a taxable.
Fringe benefit.
As a taxable fringe benefit. Now, Celine County didn't respond, and Ellsworth County didn't respond, but that doesn't mean that it's right. And that's the question, that does not mean that it's right. It does not mean that it fits the law, and it doesn't mean that we aren't violating the law. When it says that.
But then, but then again, in, in the information that you printed out from myself and, and for the commissioners last week, I'm hearing, I, I'm looking at clearly marked police fire or public safety officer vehicles.
Read the definition of public safety officer.
I, I see that.
Read the definition.
I see that, I'm gonna read it. A clearly marked police fire or public safety officer vehicle is qualified non-personal use of vehicle only if the following apply. The employee must always be on call, am I always on call?
Not necessarily.
No.
Okay, so, so when storm spotter meeting starts, or when storm spotting season starts this new year, if it's past four thirty, I don't care? Is that the, is that the desired response you expect to get from me? No, I have pride in the job that I do for the county, so therefore I do that.
I appreciate how you're looking at me about this.
Well, again, I can eyeball them too.
Well, eyeball them, because they're the ones that need to make that decision.
Well, again, again, I take pride in the job that I do, I make myself available for the county at any time. Uh, again, I don't rotate, or I don't go out on all the calls that Rodney used to do, my predecessor used to do, because first off, he was in the scene, and, and he was not being proactive in helping resolve or mitigate the problem that was on scene. Half the time he was standing there smoking cigarettes and woofing at the guys. I don't smoke, I don't have to go out and woof at the guys, if they need something, they know how to contact me, and I can get them whatever they need. I don't have to be on scene, so therefore, yes, I, I don't go out and.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna skip over, the question of you being on call, I guess, you know what? Up until this point, that's been at your discretion, okay, but let's go to number two. The employee must be required by the employer to use the vehicle for commuting. This is not true. Um, I would agree with Dawn that the, the vehicle itself that you're talking about is not what this law is referring to. This is referring to like a sheriff's office, a sheriff's department office vehicle. If a sheriff is going to be on call and responding to something, they must be in that county vehicle because they're not going to pull over a citizen and arrest them out of their own personal vehicle. And we have a schedule that they keep. I think what we're looking at, because I, when this was brought to us to, to read, I do see the problem. Uh, the public safety officer is an individual serving in a public agency in an official capacity with or without compensation as a law enforcement officer as described above, or as a firefighter, chaplain, or member of a rescue squad or ambulance crew. That is not you.
I'm not a firefighter for one of the volunteer fire departments here in town, or in the county?
Well, we have plenty of firefighters that are involved in all of the fire departments that don't work for the county.
Okay.
You're trying to cross, uh, venues there, but what I'm saying is, I read this thoroughly when it was given to us, and there, there really isn't a qualification here that I'm seeing. Now, you, we can have the discussion about how much you're on call. You know, we can have the discussion about, is this an exempt position?
Yeah, right now it is, but there is that federal law that says that we may have to pay overtime if they don't make X amount of dollars. Now, that was, um.
What was the dollar amount?
Uh, I want to say it was like fifty-nine thousand a year. So, the question will be is when it does become an issue in which we will have to pay them overtime because we don't, we don't pay enough. But, um, as of right now, it doesn't qualify. However, where, where questions come in at is leave time. So, let's say if, if David, for example, notoriously puts forty-three to forty-eight hours of time down each week, and let's just say five hours of that is traveling to and from home, which the IRS has said is not considered work time, that is considered personal time, then if he had taken off during the week or modified his schedule in order to take off during the week, should he have used, should he have used his leave time? That's where the question comes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a question about you traveling to and from events, or traveling even to and from your various educational seminars. The question is your daily routine, I mean, there isn't. The question is your daily routine. I mean, there isn't anyone else besides Aljo Wallace who's getting paid to travel to the courthouse. It's kind of a questionable scenario, and I mean, and that's ultimately our decision as far as, like you said, your job description.
And again, when I took the position, I transferred from the sheriff's office. I'd been there for, since two thousand three to two thousand fourteen when I took the job. And with that timeframe, all I was exposed to was deputies go, go ten-eight on duty from their house. They get paid. And again, when I used to be the jailer, or dispatched over there, I didn't get paid to drive in, no. But again, they have, they have law enforcement, they have, they have lights and sirens and all those bells and whistles on. Again, was that, was that my fault for not asking? I don't know. But now, four and a half years into the job, and now that's changed. Why that wasn't caught or noticed or whatever before, again, I don't know.
But it's my understanding, like, we have an officer in Sylvan, and that particular officer has their county vehicle at their home, and so I assume they clock in when their shift starts, okay? But that also means that they don't come to the sheriff's department at that time. They start their shift and start their rounds from that location. So I'm confused as to why you think that that's the same scenario.
There's not always moments when I'll be, I'll be in the office. Again, if, and you're now telling me that when I storm spot and decide I have to come to the office, I need to contact you as the sheriff, is that correct?
No, I'm talking about.
That's what you were asking, saying earlier, because again.
Well, I think it comes down to pay time and leave time. Paid, you know.
Do I abuse my, I've got, I've got over a hundred hours right now on leave. I don't, I don't abuse that privilege. That's not the question. But now, all of a sudden it is, that I'm milking the system and I'm doing this to carry all these hours over.
Well, no, don't put words into it. No one said that.
But, but. Again.
Nobody said that.
You tell me what you want me to do, and I will follow that rule.
Let me put it into this perspective. Ladonna run, I'm always using her as an example, but it's just the most steady thing that I can think of. It's our department's control. So Ladonna runs the health department. If she clocks in from her house, just because she's on her way to her health, her health department desk, doesn't mean that she's actively working. Now, could someone have called in and she checked the messages at the health department while she's at home? Yes, but that's not paid time. And I don't know if she does that or not. I'm just giving an example. Anyone could justify something that happens that affects their job when they're not actually physically there. Now, if you're gonna respond to an actual location, that's different. But responding and coming to your desk to perform your daily duties doesn't really start at your door. It starts at your desk.
Okay.
And I'm gonna defend myself just a little bit, because I think you're angry at me. But we aren't doing things consistently. So we either need to either A, pay the highway department employees from the time they leave their homes in the vehicles, or B, we need to not pay you. One or the other, because we are not treating every single person that has a vehicle that is using their vehicle at home the same. And we need to be consistent about that. So if you're clocking in from the time that you leave your home, then they probably should be clocking in from the time that they leave their home, because you told me that you thought the reason why you were clocked in was because you were being provided a vehicle. So I'm providing reason why, just because we provide you a vehicle doesn't necessarily mean it's compensatory time from the minute that you leave your home. We just need to get consistent, and I ask the board to make that decision as to whether or not which it should be. And no offense, I think Aljo asked me if I would call attorney assist, and I haven't got a chance to do that yet, to find, to give you guys some guidelines.
What did he, he asked you to do what?
Call attorney assist to get some guidelines, and I haven't had.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, then, for example, on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, the Wednesday and Thursday, the last Wednesday and Thursday of the month, that's when the IMT meeting is, the IMT training. And again, the twenty-sixth, is that the, is that the Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday, twenty.
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, I have a, or central homeland security meeting up in Boyd, so I couldn't participate in the exercise. But again, if I don't get taskbook certified, then I'm not allowed to go out on events, whether it's Eureka, Tornado, or anything within the state, then if I don't get taskbook certified, then it's not necessarily at an event. But, again, that's why I'm participating in the exercise on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth. So the fact that that's a twelve-hour day that I will be down at Crisis City and drive time going down there in addition to, and then coming home, that's gonna be a fifteen-hour day, so that'll be thirty hours in those two days. Am I, am I allowed, then, once I hit my forty on Thursday or Friday, am I allowed to take the rest of the week off?
So I think that becomes a comp time issue, which is very different than you clocking in at home before you come to the courthouse for eight hours.
Okay.
I think those are two separate.
Those are special situations there, and I think.
Because that doesn't happen weekly.
And the question I have is, and this is as taxpayer, not as county clerk, is that class a requirement for you to have, be the emergency manager for Lincoln County? Or is that, is that class required? And that's what the commissioners are gonna have to decide in the future. If your position ever becomes non-exempt from overtime, they are going to have to determine, what things are you going to be going to training for? That are directly related to emergency management versus directly related to being on some task force? Maybe it serves as a purpose of you being on the task force. I don't know.
But I've brought this up before, because I feel like the percentage of money that we dedicate per department for training purposes is varying to a great detriment to the county. You know, I feel like we spend very little resources in the highway department on training, because we're constantly being told that there's none available, there's none available, yet that's where we need the most training, and then a decent percentage of the emergency management budget has been allocated toward training. And if not, if not budget-wise, in a line item, time paid to be part of that training. It's, the variation is great between departments.
Yeah, but David's case, I think he has to do a lot of training. He needs certifications in a lot of different areas to qualify for him to do his job. You know, he's got a special situation here compared to a lot of the other employees of this whole county, you know, so we gotta realize that.
But Dawn's question was, of the seven trainings that you attended this year, and I don't, hold me to any numbers. Of the seven trainings that you attended this year, how many of those certifications do you need versus how many are at your discretion to just further? And I'm not against furthering education by any means, but what I'm saying is, when we have other departments that need that and aren't participating, probably paying.
You got a good point.
I mean, Dawn's an elected official. To be honest, Dawn could go every month to a different seminar, or and pay herself to do it.
Sure.
But you haven't taken that route. I think you go to the annual meetings, and you go to the update events on law changes, et cetera. But, you know, some people like to go to training and some people don't. There's your baseline. You know, I love to go to training seminars. I enjoy that kind of thing, so I would love to spend my time doing that. Other people don't like it at all, so they won't participate. But it's how much of that are we going to pay for, is the question.
Like the EMS, you guys have to upgrade training quite often.
And I don't think we pay time for that, do we?
No, I absorb that into my work hours and teach in-house. The only thing that we really budget out for, for training, is our twenty-four seventy EMS program that we utilize. Now, once in a while, we'll send somebody to a conference, KMSA or KMSA Conference or something like that. But if we're gonna do something like that, we would ask prior to, in advance. And then we'd probably have, like, the last KMSA conference that I went to was at Mulvane, and we had hotel expenses and mileage and meals and stuff we have to pay for out of that.
So that brings to question, just out of curiosity, is an employee allowed to take the ambulance home?
Just like to be at home, no, the ambulance, by state regulations, has to be stored in a facility that is temperature controlled.
Okay, that makes sense with your medications.
Right. Now, I encourage crews that if they're on duty together, and they've gotta go to the store to get paper towels or something like that, they're running to the store here in town, I encourage them to take the ambulance and go together. That way, if a nine-one-one call comes out, they can leave from wherever they're at in that process, and they don't have to respond back to the station to pick up the other tech or P O B.
I think in David's case, so back to him, is that he needs to have the freedom, I think, to, if he's gonna go to a meeting like in Slina, just to leave from his home and doesn't have to stop here first to clock in, and then, you know.
I agree.
Or Boyd, or whatever, and, you know, he's got a special case. And also on weather, tornado watches and stuff, and also wondering if you had a real emergency at his house, or he called in, there was something happened, he takes up. Well, then, you know, that's clocking in. Now, I do see the one case, David, on your day-to-day stuff, when you do kind of blink in here like to the office, which is a normal day, maybe then you shouldn't clock in till you get here. And then when you go home, clocked out, and not counted going home on a regular basis. That's where Dawn, I think Dawn says that, she's always thinking about us getting in trouble with the IRS the way it's billed, and that because of police departments one way, but then the highway department's a different way, and where do you fall into that category, and that's the question. She's just trying to watch out for the county. She's not personally going after you on that. It's just that was a question. So I think on that case, going here to home on a regular day, that's where you should maybe, you know, clocking in, get home, leave here and then home. But now, if you're gonna go to Boyd for this, or down to your trainings or wherever, that's a whole different situation, in my opinion. Don't you think, Dawn? Or how would you handle that?
If he's coming through Lincoln, then it should be from the time that he leaves Lincoln.
Yeah, if you're coming through Lincoln, you're stopping.
If it's afternoon session, yeah.
Now, if you're coming through Lincoln, you're stopping here, then maybe. But if you're just, you know, not, it's kind of common sense here, but on the day-to-day basis.
Here's where the two comes.
We don't wanna get in trouble with the IRS. I think Dawn was watching out for us, and that was why this whole thing came up. We don't wanna get busted on that.
I just need to be consistent.
Yeah, be consistent.
Well, and there are two separate issues. There's the issue of responding to an event or leaving your home to go to a training for the day, regardless of how many hours that is, versus coming back and forth to work. And where they, where they conjoin is, if you're getting paid five hours a week to travel, but let's say the week that you don't go anywhere on an event, and you're just coming back and forth to the courthouse, you're getting paid for that five hours. So then when you have five hours of additional training the next week, really, that shouldn't be comp time, because you've gotten paid to travel that five hours already. It's already travel time that you've been paid. So if you don't pay that daily travel time, then you know that timeout is timeout. And if you comp it for your forty hours in that pay period, let's say, I mean, is that how it's been done? You comp within your pay period?
Pay, pay period.
So like, or the twenty-seventh with their week?
Weekly, is what I was told. You can't carry over comp time to another week, is what I was always under.
And do you get overtime if you go over forty?
On summer position.
Right there.
Okay, so, for example, back to the end of this month, that particular week, you have three different events that you're going to do that are gonna take up at least thirty hours.
Two, those two days, and the third one on the twenty, the Tuesday, that's during my normal job, so that's why I didn't utilize that, because that's during my normal work.
But basically, what you're saying is, you'll have almost thirty hours just in those two days.
Those two days, yes.
Right, so if you have ten from Tuesday, let's say, then you have a three-day work week, in my opinion. I mean, that's, for your position, that's how I would view that. But I think the commission needs to come up with that in writing.
Yeah, you got a special situation, and also you're gonna go on some of your, where you have, you go out on training, not on mid-run, exercises, right, David? Where you have training for accidents happening and that type of stuff. And that's mandatory. We need that for you to do that, I would say, so.
And like my full-scale exercise that I have coming up March, that's Saturday. That's a Saturday, and again, the company facilitating the exercise is gonna be here at eight o'clock in the morning. I have things that I wanna do prior to them getting here that morning, make sure all my things are in order to where I can give them my time to be able to facilitate whatever their needs are while they're getting set up. And then the exercise, the moulaging and the briefing stuff at the start of the exercise is going, starts at nine o'clock, and then the exercise starts at ten. And then with that, then, supposed to go through three-thirty, four o'clock, again, depending on how the hot wash plays out after the incident.
Dawn, since he's kind of a special situation, do you have any recommendation on how to deal with that?
Well, I don't wanna make any recommendations to you guys, because obviously, I'm getting accused.
Well, it's not your job.
We don't want you to get accused, but you deal with the accounting and the time cards, and you know the law, which you found out here. I don't, we don't wanna get.
We need to have an internal policy per department. That goes back to having spending policies per department, because no two departments are the same. Whereas I would suggest if you wrote a policy for his department, for emergency management, it would say, if you are attending an event, or traveling to and from an educational seminar, or, and what do they call it?
And for me, you guys need to add that you pre-approve those, because he could be gone every day to a meeting.
You need to really be looking to see.
What is it that is?
I don't try to intend to do that, though. I, I get.
But you know, this is just for you personally.
We used to always have to come and get any kind of education approved, always.
And it's not about you personally. If you're not here, if you're not here next year, it has to follow through. You know, we can't just say, well, we trust the person that's in that seat. That's what they've done, and that turns out to be a disaster, because the next person takes liberties that they say, well, the last person did. You know, I mean, it's, it's, to create uniformity. And I would say, in his situation, it would be, you know, if you're attending an event of, what do you call it when you do like reenactments or?
An exercise.
An exercise, that's the word you use. An exercise, a training, or an actual disaster event, from the time that you get ready and leave, that's your time, and you should be able to comp that out, in my opinion, for that week. But travel time to and from your job, I'm not willing to do that for the highway department. I mean, we would be paying someone coming from Barnard every day, who really needs to spend their time out on the roads, still getting travel time, but doing something for us, not just getting to the office. So, you know, I think each department is separate.
Work on, maybe we should work on a policy for, especially David's case, because it's specialized compared to some of these other ones.
Well, no one else is really going to be leaving their home and attending an event that would just randomly pop up. I mean, EMS is on call to do that.
Well, like, and Dawn said.
Sheriff's Department is on call to do that. That's why they're scheduled, those schedules.
Right, now, the police department's special in their situation, then the highway department isn't, because they're, so we need to maybe specialize on these departments.
Right, and technically, the sheriff is an elected official, so I guess, we can, we can choose not to approve payroll based on their policies, but they could really create their own policies. So.
I don't think we can do any more today on this, huh?
No, I think we need to write it down in writing. I would, I'll help do that in the near future. But I think time cards is really something that needs to happen soon, like before we get this position hired. So, have you given any more thought to how you'd like to, which time card you'd like to use as a template?
My goal on Wednesday is to get pricing and find, and more information on the time clock system.
Okay, Wednesday, this week, you just need to do that. Is that what you mean, two days from now?
Time clock.
The thirteenth?
And that will solve a lot of issues, because like you said, you know, the sheriff's department, their overtime doesn't start until they hit their forty-fourth hour.
Why are they different?
Because there's a federal law that says we don't have to pay them overtime above forty-three. You can make it less if you want to.
Oh, no.
But.
Well, I don't know. But.
But that's where I have said in the past, and Randy, you haven't been here, that our ambulance attendants, no offense to you guys, but our ambulance attendants and some of our deputies are making more money than our undersheriff is. That's not necessarily appropriate. And in fact, there's a couple of them that make more money than our sheriff does. I don't know where we get the imbalance at, but part of it came with, they gave a dollar an hour raise to the deputies, but they didn't adjust the sheriff's wage or the undersheriff's wage, so then their fluctuation. So I said, maybe the thing is, is to pay the undersheriff some overtime, maybe increase their pay, or do something, but your employees should not be making more money than you are. It just should not. There should be enough difference, but I'm not sure.
Wendy here, because she was making forty thousand a year, and the employees with the overtime they were getting were making just over what she was making.
We just have to figure it out. I just don't know how. I don't know what the answer is.
Well, it starts by putting things in writing. We can always amend policies, but when we don't have any to begin with, therein lies the problem. You know, you're just grasping at each.
Would we want to get a universal time card?
Yes. What I'd like to do is do a time clock. I know people are against it, but I think that once they get used to it, they won't mind so much. But most of the time clocks I've ever used, you either clocked in or you didn't. And if you didn't, you know, you wrote down why you didn't, whether it was that you forgot or whatever. I don't know anything about this time clock system, so I'm gonna have to find out about it, but my understanding is, is you can clock in on your phones.
I was gonna say, nowadays if you get on your phone or the internet and clock in, then it all comes right into you on a on a database and then you got it all. That's.
Well, and that's the thing. I don't really care what people do. I only care what they worked. I don't care what they do.
Right.
Where you know, like I think the highway department, they're trying to process all their time cards before they bring them up here because they care about what they do.
Yeah, exactly. They're trying to input data before it's transferred over to just purely do the hours. What were you gonna say?
I I get the whole phone thing of being able to clock in on there. I think that's great. It works really well for most people. I do have an employee that works for me that has a dumb phone, lack of a smartphone is what I'm calling it. And he wouldn't have that capability to do it on his phone. Now, on a day to day basis, he would be able to clock in at the station when he came on shift.
Right.
And clock out before he left, but he also responds in Sylvan to calls over there, so he wouldn't be able to utilize that if Sylvan was called out.
And that's where the paper time card comes in and that's why I'm saying, right, right. And that goes directly back to the conversation that started about the janitorial position. If he's going to come in for two or three hours in the evening or in the morning or whatever, if that's comped out in that same week, there just needs to be a note. And therefore it's trackable instead of someone just constantly, you know, staying late and coming in late. Or leaving early and coming in early. I mean, it it really is not fair. So there has to be a general policy. And then there has to be department specific exceptions. Which I think David, yours would be all those things we mentioned, the exercises, the trainings and the response to events. Now I, out of curiosity, how much time do you spend doing storm spotting and where do you go and what kind of hours do you put in doing that?
It it depends on on the severity of the storm or how tracks coming up from Oklahoma in the southeast.
But just in years past, I mean, you've been doing it long enough, you should have a a general concept of how many hours of quote unquote overtime you'd have to put in in the summer or in the spring.
With with a particular storm, it could be an hour, but but again, like with the with the storm that tore off the roof over at Sylvan. Again, on the school, the gymnasium and that. Again, I was storm spotting from my house that night at from my house. And then Dana Vannata, assistant fire chief and EMS and whatnot. He called me and said, hey, you heard the school roof got tore off the school building in Sylvan? No. So then again, I headed that way because that was destruction within the county. So I got over there and contacted the weather service and set up a. A survey to be done the next day. And so I was over there not as a school board member, but I was doing my job. And then in that timeframe, I communicated with Chance Hayes, he's one of the meteorologists from the Wichita Weather Service. And set up a meeting that he would be in out the next day at whatever time it was. And driving home that night, then I saw some damage that was done along eighteen by the Best Per Cemetery with a tree uprooted and stuff and. Okay, so then again, showed him that and we went around the county and looking at things the next day. But again, you know, that that night of that, again, maybe half an hour, hour, forty-five minutes at the house. And then post incident was, I was over there for an hour because I was up taking pictures on the roof of the school and.
It varies, you know, how we could get a, they'll be talking, you know, we're gonna have big severe like in May or you know, end of May. We have big severe's coming up tonight and build up out west by Dodge City and you know it's coming, just like you knew this blizzard's coming. And they're gonna, so he's getting ready for that down at two in the afternoon and about seven at night it may hit here, you know, and you know the big line of thunderstorms coming. And then if you do have a big wind or a tornado or a flood or a creek out or whatever, you know, you can't. It's hard to guess, judge that.
And again, if if it's gonna be bad, generally, and again, we're the furthest north county that Wichita Weather Service covers. We're actually closer to Hastings and I just got added on their their conference calls when when they set up a conference call, they know whether it's gonna be bad. Weather Service, whether it be Wichita or Hastings, again, they'll send out a conference call, hey, here's the number, here's this. And then you just call into that number and I generally forward that information to the fire chiefs, the school districts, the assistant chiefs. Just so they're prepared and they can get in on that conference call to see how bad it might be and what we might need to do.
Right, well, yeah, I mean.
And I try to disseminate that information to everybody that I can.
So plus you mentioned earlier when we were talking about EMS stuff, you know, utilizing mutual aid from other counties. David also has that responsibility if they have a big incident and a large incident, another county to provide mutual aid to another county.
To notify everyone and get it coordinated.
Yeah, so it's.
And I think I think it's self explanatory that if something happened on a Saturday and you spent quite a few hours that day and then you did a follow up on Sunday with whomever for whatever. You know, those eight hours, let's say, if you didn't come in on Monday and there was a note as to why and that you had put your time in over the weekend, I think that's understandable.
Well, that's just good. It's just like John Paul on the maintenance guy. They're gonna have variable hours, just like he came in for this morning because our. Boiler over there is leaking and then he, you know, and he cleared snow on a Sunday last week. So they're gonna have variable hours.
Right, but what the commission needs to say is it's eight to four thirty.
Yeah, normally.
Office hours.
Right.
And if you're comping out time because something happened or because you were somewhere else, then you're not gonna be in that office that day. And we know that and your phone's gonna go to answering machine.
Right, the normal hours and the normal laws like driving here, I'd say. But when you got a specialty thing going on, then that's different.
Right.
And we need to document that for like John Paul like him.
For the HR, this new HR person would then have a note and say, oh, well, you were doing.
And we want to make it, make it so we comply with your IRS laws. So.
Right. And that's what's fair to other departments.
Yeah, but we do need to document that, you're right Alexis, and work on that for each department and EMS is probably different because of their. Their double shift day.
Yes, yes. Okay, so well, you know, and that's another place we can start with EMS is if we didn't pay overtime until forty-three. That would at least be some flexibility that we have financially, you know, if if we weren't gonna just. Reschedule all the twenty-four hour shifts. That's something that we have the choice to do is to start.
I'm not sure they fit, but we'll have to look because it's fire.
That's a different.
Yeah, fire. Our EMS is not connected with the fire department. I'll have to look and see.
I believe that rule only applies to.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
Okay.
The hundred and seventy-two hour rule.
Okay.
I'll have to look.
Anything else for today?
What, can we approve these? Liggett and M. One?
Oh, yes.
As far as I'm concerned, they've been on there and I think they would be good again.
Well, we.
Mr. Liggett, Mr..
Thanks David. Have a good day.
See you David.
Okay, so are these not the only responses we got to the board appointments?
They're the two. Well, they've been on there and yeah, all out of all that.
Was there a Terry?
Out of all that.
Out of all those. Oh, no, it's not. I had one. I wanted via email and I think they just couldn't. They called me and I didn't have your email pulled up, so I think they sent it to my email.
And I did not send a letter to every single board member that was expiring. That's just duplicate work to say.
At their meetings, they should be discussing when their terms are up, hopefully. I did have an email come in.
And I know that we'll get one more, Mr. Tristan retired from the hospital board. I'll working on trying to get someone else.
Do you have anyone on the on the hook for?
Well, I'm working, I've talked to some people and maybe I'm, but these two went back on, so should we approve them today, you think?
We have for all of these positions, correct?
Yes.
Okay, hold on one second, I wanna see.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. You do that, yeah.
Can I look at this?
Yeah, yeah.
I think mine's very.
That's fine.
So we have repeater board, no interest.
There's a one.
Two out of the three hospital trustees. Okay, bus board, two, no interest. Resettion board, one, one, no interest. Preservation board, we had three open. Now we have four open because we have resignation and no interest letters. How many are on that?
Well, you guys appointed quite a few last year, so.
Oh, that's the one that we did everybody that requested.
What does the preservation board do?
I think the people that are interested in it want to preserve buildings and structures. It's just getting money. They don't have any money. Kelly Larson is really.
Kelly's been working on grants and everything for that.
Yeah, and she probably could explain more. I don't know if she's gone to their meetings. Alfred Oftonberg is on it.
Yeah, pick her in. John Thompson passed away.
So while we're talking about that, just quickly, I had heard that Lincoln County Economic Development is trying to merge with the Chamber of Commerce. Does anyone have any information to share on that?
I never heard about that.
I don't know any details. I haven't been to their meetings.
I know I've been told that, but I'm not sure who told me, but.
I think two twenty-two. Had you been aware of that at all or?
I have heard that.
But nothing official?
The Chamber's kind of a pride.
It is and I I would be a little concerned just because are they planning on coming to the courthouse? Because I mean, how many nonprofits do you guys have that utilize our space?
Well, in addition to that, I feel that we need to discuss also, we have the economic development. Board and employee and additional employees that we're housing in our courthouse, but we're also one hundred percent funding them. So it might not make sense to necessarily charge the rent because we're already funding them. But if they're going to combine efforts with another group to increase their funding and we are gonna end up housing. Anyone or any type of activity that pertains to an outside organization, there should be some rent compensation in my mind.
Is your Chamber of Commerce, is that a Lincoln city thing or Lincoln county?
County.
I think they're considered county.
It's county as far as I know because you can belong, I'm out, I belong to the commerce and I'm out of the city.
You're in Sylvan.
I think it's called Lincoln.
No, it's all, it's county. It's Lincoln County.
Yeah, you're right. When they opened in the, I was in the river county. I was in your restaurant there a couple weeks ago.
Was it good?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so I have a letter of interest and Dawn, I'll have to forward this to you. My my phone is not cooperating with pulling up the.
Figure out how to run the email yet?
Sometimes technology is not as easy as what it seems.
I like to have it available, but then I can't pull up everything and say, so the Barnard Fire Board. Which is not even my district, but it's okay.
Bob Abel, that's Bob Abel, yeah.
Well, this one is Bob Keach.
He wants to be on it?
He is, yes. His letter of interest was sent to me on two twenty-one.
I think he asked last year too.
Yes, and he is the one, I think, that gave a whole list of which is in there, but I can't get up, pull up, but is all of his. His resume basically. So Barnard, who was up for?
Right up here.
Bob Abel, we haven't heard from him. Okay.
Those two, those two are on and I think that'd be good again.
Are these both in your district?
Yeah, one by and then Mr. Houston.
Would Bob, or I mean, would. Mr. Houston be in Aljo's district?
Uh, yours.
No, no.
Oh, and mine? He's, he's on that side of Sixth Street.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's on your district. He's us west of fourteen hundred, right on the counter.
Okay. Okay, so we have a resignation from Mr. Vannata from the preservation board. I so moved to accept a resignation.
You'll need a motion to, oh, I make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second. There is no further discussion. Vote aye. Aye, motion carries. So we have Yoya Pitterd, inheritance guideline committee. Terry Jo Heter has a letter of interest. Saying that she, Yoya was her second cousin and she's interested in seeing that the program is administered and continued along the guidelines that she requested. I also feel that a family member should be on the committee as long as there are family members residing within the county and one of them is willing to serve. Terry Jo Heter. Mr. Houston, dear madam and sir, madam and sirs, I have served on this board for the past five years and wish to continue to do so. Therefore, I request reappointment to the board of trustees, Lincoln County Hospital. And Mr. Liggett, Lincoln County Commissioners, I would like for you to consider my application to seek reappointment for another term as a member of the Lincoln County Hospital Board of Trustees. I was originally appointed to this board on December thirteenth, two thousand and four and consider this to be a very important board to represent Lincoln County. And then I have Mr. Keach, Bob Keach requesting to be on the Barnard Rural Fire District. I so move to approve those requests.
I second.
Any further discussion? I'm a little surprised because we had a lot more interest last year, but I'm still glad that we advertised and that we have some official applications.
Okay, now what about the positions that are not? Well, maybe go ahead and do your finish your motion, sorry.
Yes, that's okay. Well, that's part of the discussion too. I mean, I think maybe we should just do another notice that they're open. I mean, we want them filled and we're appointing these particularly because they came in on time. If we get more interest and have some.
You advertise this on paper.
Yeah.
I would like to do a mail out. I feel like the paper isn't reaching but the same group. It's the same people who have a subscription to the paper. Some people pick it up in the restaurants or in the convenience store occasionally, but they might not get it every week. So let's do a mailer and announce the openings.
I have no idea how to do that.
Just this and you take it, we print off as many as we need. All we have to do are the the zip codes. Six, seven, four, five, five, six, seven, four, eight, one and with with Barnard.
Six, seven, four, one, eight, opposite of Sylvan.
And is Beverly included in Lincoln?
Six, seven, four, two, three.
Okay, so we need all of those. And you pay a flat rate at the post office.
Do you have to?
E D M, every, you do at every. Door.
What's it called? You worked this?
What?
Every door.
The mailers that they'll.
Every door.
A flyer? You can make a folded flyer.
Yeah, just the triple fold.
You triple fold it like this, like here, you do this like that.
Actually, the rules don't allow that to be triple folded. I'm just telling you because we've done it.
Oh, they don't?
Yeah, but it's like, I think it's called every door delivery mail and it's substantially less expensive than regular mail.
Yeah, yeah, it's special, cheaper.
If I Google that, it tells you like what you need to do.
I think you can actually pay for it online.
Yeah, you pay.
Or you could call.
I did mine at the post office, but I I did it one time.
You could call the aunt or Deb down here in Lincoln, at the R. D. O., you know, Lincoln Post Office, they'll tell you how to do it all.
I think that's what we should do and just announce the.
I think we get more response because a lot of times I agree. And if you send them an individual thing, then they feel like they're special and they actually respond.
Yes, okay.
Just a suggestion, I would mail it to to areas that weren't directly involved in that board, like if it's the Barnard Fire Board.
That's true. That's true. We don't need Lincoln P. Oh, but they're all listed together. It's the whole list of all the openings.
It would be a nightmare if I had to sort it out.
Yeah, and the people in Westfall know they can.
Let's just send it countywide one time.
I'll just take out the positions that are open or that are now filled.
Yes, but we have, but there were more open than filled except for Barnard one position.
Right, okay.
That's it.
All right.
Because we still have.
These letters.
Well, hospitals.
That's the one opening. Opening. Okay.
I don't. If you do, I have some information on the hand I enjoy.
I said that looks like a project hand I'm enjoying.
Okay, one more thing. This resolution from the. North Central Regional Planning Commission. Yes. And I, Dawn, I don't think we need to do an extra approval for this public update. If they've if they've managed that in their own print.
I went ahead and told her that you said it was okay at that cost.
Yes.
Kind of what I thought the consensus was.
We're gonna do it regardless, so. Regional collaboration for North Central Regional Planning Commission, objective, host annual roundtable discussion with regional. E D D, I guess I don't know what that means, but continue to coordinate preparedness activities, continue to serve as the fiscal agent for the six. For six of the regional homeland security councils. Which includes all but three Kansas counties. Continue to oversee project investments which address planning, organization, equipment, training and exercise needs. And help build local and regional response capabilities, encourage citizen safety and preparedness. Continue to sponsor and oversee the North Central Kansas F C.
I don't know what that is.
I don't know what that is either. Food cooperative, I think. Local growers and producers. I think that's what that is. They started the food cooperative. North Central Regional Regional Planning Commission started a food cooperative where they were trying to get local goods produced and sold within the region. Host annual work session with one specific group of stakeholders representing each county in order to stay connected. Continue collaborating with. Continue collaborating with F H R C, I don't know what that is, in jurisdictions in North Central Kansas, with research, planning, and public outreach. Continue relationship with C T C from Glenn Elder, in providing high-speed fixed wireless internet, email, web hosting, and co-location. Okay, this is very lengthy, so I'm just gonna say. But basically, this is very vague, I was wondering what they wanted us to sign. Well, this is the resolution that we did not sign, because we didn't have the corresponding paperwork, this is the corresponding paperwork. Assist at least two cities annually in completing five-year capital improvements, continue to sit, to survey cities and counties. Continue to sustainably deliver the highest quality internet access, that would be N C K C N. Expand the number of wireless internet hotspots throughout the region from fifteen hotspots within six cities to twenty-two hotspots. Within ten cities over the next five years, continue to work with member cities and counties, helping them assess. Access financing to address their infrastructure and development needs, that's what we're using them for this year. Support youth career explorations, sponsor rural voices and youth contests for high school seniors. Encourage the development of youth councils, market leadership learning opportunities, work with the post-secondary educational networks. I think it's pretty thorough, just for they have multiple goals, many of which they probably can't even reach in here, so. I move to approve resolution two thousand and nineteen six. Which is the adoption of the two thousand and nineteen North Central Regional Planning Commission Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is this. Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye. Motion carried.
I don't know if we ever voted on the appointments, but we.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I continue on the discussion without the vote? What do you say, call the question? I'll call my own question.
I just assumed you had all voted yes.
I'm sorry.
We voted yes on the appointments of the two.
All those in favor for the appointment of the board members as listed, vote aye. Not opposed, my apologies.
That's okay.
I guess you're listed as secretary.
That's fine.
Thanks for reminding me of that, I lost.
Well, we were in discussion.
Okay, if there's no further business to come before the board, I will join the meeting until March eight, uh eleventh. At ten AM in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
Okay, here's Al Joe's.